Good evening. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton Planning Board. It's Thursday, October 4th, 2018, and the opening statement is as follows. Pursuant to Section 13 in the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the 2018 Agenda Resolutions of the regularly scheduled meetings of the Princeton Planning Board. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the Princeton Municipal Complex and is to be maintained throughout the year by transmitting a copy of such schedule to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, the Trentonian, and Comcast Media. A copy has been filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the eighth day of December 2017. Legal notice on the adoption of said resolution appeared in the December 15, 2017 edition of the Princeton Packet. Could you call the roll, please?
Ms. Capizole?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Mr. Stankiewicz?
Here.
Mr. Texani?
Here.
Mrs. Almond?
Here.
Mr. Williamson?
Here.
Ms. Wilson?
Here.
Mrs. Gunning?
Here.
Ms. Sax? We have a quorum.
Thank you. Does anyone have any announcements? No? No one? All right. You were sent two sets of findings and facts. The first one was Main Street Eats LLC. This is from September 6th of this year. It was a minor site plan with variances. Anyone have any corrections, additions? If not, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
Oops.
Anyway.
It's been moved and seconded twice, it sounds like.
[laughing].
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. The second one was 20 Nassau Street Professional Building LLC, and this too was from September 6th of this year. It was a minor site plan with variances. Any additions, corrections? Anything? Anyone? All right. Hearing none, could I get a motion on that, please?
I'll move it, too. I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. All right. That brings us to this evening's hearing. This is Landwind Development. It's a major subdivision and site plan. Province Line Road, Block 102, lots 6.02 and 18.02. And, Eileen, I assume the noticing for this was all in order?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I think that, Jerry, if you have no preliminary remarks, we should have Dan Dobremilski, who wrote the report for the planning board, lead us through what we're going to hear tonight. Dan, if you...
Yeah, Dan, I'm going to swear you in if you can raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So, so want to affirm. Could you please state your full name for the record?
Daniel Dobremilski, Planner, Landscape Architect. Thank you. Good evening. Good evening. I've submitted a report to the board on September 24th, 2018, and I'll be generally following that report to give you a preliminary of what's going on. So, as a background, this property or tract originally was part of what was called Province Line Woods, approved by this board in 1988. Included four, five phases. This is Phase 5 of the total. So, this particular Phase 5 is 150, 2.8 acres, located, let me see here, located with Cherry Valley Route, Province Line Road. And for the record, what I'm pointing to is Sheet 5 and 6 from the plan set. They have been pieced together and just with different parts highlighted from the plan set.
And let's mark that as Exhibit PB1?
Sure. So, generally, the site is sloping from the north, south to the north. Exhibits a variety of topographic slopes. There's about 28 acres of wetlands when you include the buffers and other, the transition buffers and other, certainly. When you include the transition buffers and other environmental constraints, it's basically about 80 acres of constrained lands out of the, about 52 percent. What they, what you have in front of you is a residential cluster. So, let me step back one second in that when the original approval occurred for the entire subdivision, all five phases, there were 11 lots envisioned for this piece. Subsequent, but part of that approval was if they could get the septic fields to work, they could go to 16 lots with a conventional subdivision. At one point, I believe this board may have approved the conventional subdivision for the 16. They came in and had access off Province Line Road. There was some difficulty with getting the permits for that access. They came back to you more recently with proposing access from Frederick Court, if you recall. They withdrew that application, I believe, and now they're back. They've been able to work out some of the difficulties with the EP on the Province Line Road access, and they're back with that. Part of what they did in the meantime is they have decided, I assume, to go with the cluster option. So, clustering would mean that you have either the same yield or if there's a bonus for different aspects in the number of lots, but they're smaller, more compact, and you result in providing open space as a general. So, what they're actually proposing now are 19 lots, still on septic fields. The open space will be a total of 114 acres of open space, mostly all located up on the upper portion here, which is 75 percent of the Phase 5, 152 acres. There are specific requirements for, under the town, the municipal cluster ordinance that they have to meet. There are six specific requirements that are listed in three of the report. Most of them are pretty straightforward things. The one that they, we should get some testimony on is just about that, how the, basically the Homeowners Association documents will be created and make sure that that's all makes sense and works. Other than that, it's making sure you comply with the other portions of the code. So, in order to get to the 19 lots, there are density bonuses that they're taking advantage of. And so, they can range from 5 to 35 percent depending upon how much open space is added, if there are paths added, things of that sort. And I think with the applicant, I'd like the applicant to go specifically through if the board, how they arrived at the 19 lots from the 16 lots. The, regarding the actual plan, the subdivision plan, the lots will vary in size from one and a half acres to two to three acres in size. The open space, as I said, will be 114 acres. There is a master plan trail, and your master plan highlighted here in yellow on the one side of the property. They are proposing some trails internal on the property as well. The road, the new road, Thompson Woods, it's labeled, will be a 31, 100-foot long road with a 50-foot right-of-way, 22-foot paved cartway with mountable curb on both sides, which exceeds RSI slightly. The, there are requirements that they provide a green belt. The original approval had a green belt area along here and then extending along the back of the now proposed lots. The portion to the, was it north of, the northeast of Frederick Court is now encompassed by the open space. The greenbelt areas that are behind the lots are proposed to be in form of an easement. The greenbelt is 150 foot wide, for the most part, off the back of those lots. They're proposing right-of-way dedications on Cherry Valley and Province Line Road. The previous approvals did include some homeowners declarations and easements, and they should be considered with this new application and reviewed with this new application. In terms of the existing trees, so the site is in wood, entirely wood, and part of the idea of the cluster would be, so I'm now going to Sheets 9 and 10 of the plan set, which are also, there are some things highlighted on that. So, Jerry, I need a new exhibit. So, this would be B2?
Yes.
So, this is a blow-up of the area of just the proposed lots. The open space is often to the upper portion of it. So, this is enlarged. So, what this plan shows is the road coming in and the potential or typical houses, potential houses, that would be built on each lot, and the impact that, of what grading might be necessary in order to build those lots. So, if you saw in the report, there are some areas of steep slope that occur through the area where the actual lots will be subdivided out. And one of the comments in the report was that because of those steep slopes, there will be some, you know, extensive grading that'll be necessary to build the houses along with the road and substantial clearing relative, if the land was relatively flat. But, in the overall, by clustering, they're going to reduce the clearing because the open space will have a lot of area that will be preserved and should reduce the clearing. They did submit a tree location plan. As I look at it, it seems to me that that plan needs to be updated. I think there's some things that are maybe missing from that plan, and it needs to be updated. Ultimately, the discussion has been that the initial construction of the road, a stormwater pond, there's two stormwater ponds. There's a large pond showing up here above to the north, and then a real small pond along the road coming in from the Province Line Road. Those, the area, the area of clearing for the road and the ponds, the applicant would deal with the mitigation of the tree removal. And then, there's been discussion that each individual lot owner would have to deal with the tree removal and mitigating that on the individual lots as they're developed because it's really not easy to figure out what's going to happen on those lots right now. So, one of the things would be that there should be an update of the tree location plan and then therefore the tree removal plan for the subdivision improvements. So, a large number, probably about 4,000 trees will be removed to do this. Still, they are proposing to plant street trees along the road, 117, which is not nearly enough to compensate for what's being removed. We did talk about having some consideration for trying to add some landscape associated with the ponds in order to increase the number of trees that they can plant on the site. There's also discussion of trying to maybe tighten up the spacing a little bit of the street trees to also add some trees to the proposal as far as when the road and the detention basins are constructed. There are specific comments about the street tree species, having more diversity, a tree, street tree species, some notes about the size and location. I think the recommendation would be to have this reviewed by the Landscape Subcommittee for the landscape plan and those issues, and through the Township Arbors, I guess, for the tree removal ultimately on the individual lots. So, there are potential conditions if the board were to grant this approval. There also are some specific conditions that the, in the Land Use Engineer Report regarding elements of the subdivision, some of the utilities that are involved, the stormwater basin, off-track improvements that were, would be required, or recalculation, any calculation of the fees charged for those things. So, that's a, they also have to be agreed upon or made conditions. I think that covers everything as an overview of what you're proposing. Is there any questions that you have?
Yes.
I guess my main question at this point in the presentation is the test fit plan for the 16 lots that was the basis for the percentage increase. I think there was a comment in the reports asking that that be submitted. I believe we have that in our package, and the question is whether anybody has reviewed that test fit plan to determine whether all 16 of those lots are really buildable lots because I know the ordinance suggests it's not just a question of figuring out a way to lay them out, but actually being able to build on them. And I know there's a lot of wetlands and stuff like that that might prevent such. So, you know, as we're considering whether 19 is the right number of cluster units, it would be important to know whether 16 is the real feasible number of standard subdivision units.
I think, go ahead.
Okay, Jack, you want to answer that, if you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
So, so want to affirm. Please state your full name.
John M. West, Land Use Engineer. Yes, they did submit a plan. We have reviewed it, and they do have 16 conforming lots to the four-acre minimum.
So, in my looking at the plan, there were no buffer areas for the wetlands. There was just the wetlands themselves. Have you got a version of it that shows the buffers?
It doesn't show the buffers, but there's still, even if you consider the buffers, there's still adequate room to build a house. You can have wetlands and wetlands buffers on the lot. You just have to make sure that there's adequate room to build a house, and we've looked at that.
Okay. Are there, yes, Ms. Almond?
Just one question at this point for Dan. You mentioned that about 4,000 of the 4,500 existing trees will be, need to be removed. Are those only on the sites that the developer will be dealing with, or does that include the properties of the homeowners?
I believe the applicant may be able to give you an updated number this evening on that. I think the number, probably part of it is coming from the previous application with the access from Frederick, and that's why I said I think they need to update their tree location plan and their tree removal plan. It's not quite clear. It looks like some of the existing trees are not shown on the tree location plan.
But they are still, the ones you remove to are only those that the developer will be removing. They're not the ones that will be on the properties that they...
No, we have to, that would be, the 4,000 would be more than just the road.
I think there was somewhere else in the report that said about 1,700 come out for the road itself.
Yeah, well, that's why I wondered. So, one of the things we'll want to do is to have some way of ascertaining the actual numbers when the time comes to...
Right. Yeah, we'll have to have a...
Shaking his head, yes.
I think, I think the Land Use Engineer actually asked for a plan that just shows the road and basins and what's the actual limited disturbance for those, and therefore we can calculate if they haven't done it already, the number of trees based upon that plan only. And then, ultimately, each individual lot will be an individual case, and in total, it's going to be over 4,000 is the estimate at this point. But for the road and the basins, it's not 4,000.
I thought of a second question that I asked you.
Go ahead.
It's probably in the reports somewhere, but I missed it until I thought about it later, and then I couldn't find it. Have, have all the lots been tested for septic systems and per...
Yes.
So, we know that all of the 19 are?
Correct.
Okay, there you go.
If you look at this, if you look at this plan, the septic fields are shown and test pit locations are shown on the plan. This would be on the Sheet 9 and 10. A lot of them are at the back. Some of them are in the greenbelt easement, which I think was envisioned before, and the, that easement language will have to take into account the fact that there's going to be potential for development of septic fields within the greenbelt area.
Thank you. Yes?
Since we're talking about septic fields, I want to drill down a little bit on that. I have a little bit of experience in a previous lifetime in putting, replacing a septic in an area that's very challenged, as I know the ridge is. And what you would think is the footprint of this, at the end of the day, extraordinarily expensive septic system required enormous amount of tree clearing, a larger footprint, and a big mound. And so, I am wondering whether the perk tests and other tests that were done to determine suitability for septic showed a truly good perk rate, or whether they showed results that mean you'll need to put in a, an alternative type or system, or something like that that may dramatically exceed what, you know, the little rectangle that's on the plan in terms of footprint and overall impact. Do you, I don't know who the right, I guess I'm looking at, I don't know who the right person is to answer that.
So, I don't believe they've actually designed the systems yet, but the reason, like, those four septics are in the greenbelt is because that's where suitable soils were. So, they have soil borings throughout the site, and where the septics are shown, they've done the soils work. It's been reviewed by the Princeton Board of Health. So, the, you know, our Board of Health has been out there and reviewed the soils. I don't know how big the systems will be, or if they'll have to use alternate systems, but there is suitable soil. One thing that we've asked in our report is at least those four, that they do everything possible to get them out of the greenbelt. With the prior application, they had to do a lot more soils testing for, at one point, they had a lot more stormwater, smaller basins that were kind of in the front yard of all those houses. So, they had to do additional soils testing. So, we believe there will be adequate soils to move those out of the greenbelt, although they will have to do some more testing. So, that's one of the comments in our memo.
Any other questions for Dan? Otherwise, we'll ask Jack to really talk about his memo.
Well, I'll just ask one more question about the greenbelt because in the reports, it seemed like there were some very specific allowances of things that can go in the greenbelt. And yet, I thought I heard one of you say the language is going to have to be fine-tuned for what's allowed in the greenbelt. So, I mean, is it not something that's predetermined, that's state law, or is it, do we get to decide what goes, what's allowed in the greenbelt?
Well, it's not state law. It's a Princeton, and I don't even think it's a Princeton ordinance requirement. It's something that was in the prior approvals, but septics are allowed within the greenbelt.
Prior approvals?
Yes. And even in other parts of the municipality, there are septics in the greenbelt.
Okay.
I have a question, if it's okay. So, for Dan, in terms of the stormwater basin, I mean, maybe you can speak from a landscape architect's perspective, you know, the impact of having a basin that large and sitting water, you know, maybe this is a question for their engineer, but, you know, how is that going to affect the trees that are there and the wildlife, I guess, the vegetation there?
It's, it could work where the existing trees, I mean, we, it's really going to come down to trying to figure out what's there, what the, how is that basin going to act in terms of how long is water going to stay there? And I've seen it where it has worked, where existing trees thrive and do well. I've also seen it where it doesn't work and the trees all die because of the water being inundated. So, ultimately, that's something we're going to have to determine based upon, you know, where exactly the clearing limits have been established for the construction of the basin. What I put in there in green is what I estimated it to be based upon the grading, but ultimately, that'll be something that has to be determined and, based upon the species of the tree and the character expected of the basin, how deep the water's going to be. Most of those basins, as you may know, the water drains down within a certain period of time. What's it, 24 hours or?
Yeah.
Yes, about 24 hours. So, and there's a lot of species that are adapted to wet and dry conditions. So, it's really, that's what the evaluation's really going to have to come down to. So, it's possible that there could be more clearing associated with that basin because of the retaining of the water. It's also possible that we could actually save a decent amount of the trees with that basin.
Yes, Louise?
Another basin-related question. Yeah, I was a little confused when you referred to them as ponds because I assumed that they were infiltration basins because they were described as having sand bottoms. So, if there is pond, ponded water, it should, it should by design drain pretty rapidly. Is that what I just heard you say?
I think, I think the front basin is a sand bottom infiltration basin. Is that, the applicant would know better than me. Is that correct?
I'm going to swear you, I'm going to swear you in if you raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
So, so want to affirm. Please state your full name and spell your last name.
D. Jeffrey Brown, B-R-O-W-N, Princeton Junction Engineering.
Wow. We're really getting a testimony from the applicant at this point, so. Do you want to briefly answer the question and say something about your qualifications?
Sure. I am a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I have a degree in civil engineering from Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute. I've been licensed as an engineer for 40 years.
I think, I think we can accept, but could you...
And you've testified numerous times.
I've testified numerous times before this board.
But you...
Yes, both of the basins have an infiltration element. We were not planning on having a sand bottom, though. We were just planning on keeping the existing vegetation in the basins and just building berms in the woods. So, that is the proposal.
Okay.
If there are questions related to tree species and, I don't know, looking to the way a heavily wooded infiltration basin or bio-retention basin has been done in this area, the ones that are right next to Frick Chemistry Lab, should you get your approval, are high-capacity basins draining a huge impervious cover area, and they're completely wooded and absolutely invisible from any distance at all. It's a, it's a really interesting and unusual bio, I'm not sure whether it's bio, whether it's infiltration or bio-retention, maybe in a way, a distinction without a difference when we're talking about volume management, but it's an interesting reference point nearby.
Thank you. Any other questions for Jack? You had some other points in your report that you wanted to...
I think Dan covered most of them, but let me just... So, again, as Dan mentioned, with the landscaping, and the applicant does have more firm numbers on the number of trees, and they'll go into that with their testimony. But what we are looking for is them to give us the amount of trees removed as part of the construction of the roads, basin, and utilities, and that would be, you know, and any, whatever they... And that would be, you know, and any, whatever they can't plant on site, they would do the contribution. And then each home would be done individually. The, the stormwater has been reviewed by, by Joe Scoopia, our stormwater consultant, and with, with the exception of some technical comments that he has, he, you know, it's, it does meet the, the ordinance. They do have to get DEP and DRCC approval on the stormwater, but we're, we're confident that the, the stormwater system does, will work properly. We actually had numerous meetings with the applicant as they were doing the design, and we kind of encouraged them to keep that wooded area in the center of the basin, because it does hide it from all the homes. It, you know, will essentially be invisible. The berm itself cannot be replanted. You, you can't plant trees on the berm, but there will be room where Dan has shown the, the, the tree line adjacent to the berm. There's, there's a little bit more area, that, part of that can be replanted. That's the area that will, would be most likely stay wet towards the berm, so they could be planted with, with water-tolerant trees. A lot of the trees are ash trees in the woods. Obviously, they're not going to make it at some point anyway, so there may be some supplemental plantings within the wooded areas themselves. We did have a off-track contribution. Basically, just took the number that was established back in 2012 in that approval and then updated it to, and it's now eighty-seven thousand, so inflation went a long way. We kept a lot of the conditions that were in the original approval about the master plan trail that goes from north to south or south to north, and also a potential ultimately path along Cherry Valley Road. Those were from the original approval. We kept those conditions in. With the, the water line itself, there was a, in the original approval, there was a lot of discussion about the possibility of requiring booster pumps on the individual homes, and that's due to the proximity in elevation of the development to the existing water towers that are there. And that's something that'll be worked out when they build the homes with the building official, the fire official, and the water company. But it's a condition that was in the original approval, and we felt it should stay in. Basically, that covers it. There's a lot, you know, a lot of technical comments. I'd like to see, you know, if the applicant has any objection to any of the comments in our memo.
Okay. Any, anything for Jack?
Just, I, I think it's a clarification in the report. The section on utility service suggests that everything except for sewer and water is coming from Province Line Road, but then elsewhere it sort of says electric and cable TV and phone is all coming from Frederick Court, so I, I think only-
That's probably a mistake, probably a carryover from the last report. Everything would come from Province Line. The water is coming from, from an area in the water line near the water tower, but everything would come from Province Line.
Okay.
Uh, the one other clarification in the, in the report, in there I mentioned that they had the DEP permit to cross the wetlands. They don't actually have the permit. I think they have a verbal agreement with DEP for that, but they don't actually have the permit.
Jerry?
Yeah, Jack, are there any conditions from the prior approval that we should carry over, or you've, you've identified all of them in your, your report?
I've identified all of them that I felt were necessary.
Kenny, there are more questions for Jack. Do you want to swear?
Hi, Derek. If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes, sir, I do.
So swear or affirm. Please state your full, uh, full name.
Derek Bridger, thank you. I just want to note, there are no variances with this application. The memo did note a variance for one of the open lots, but upon further consideration, it does comply. So I just want that on the record.
Any questions for Derek? Brian, did you, want, want to go over your report?
Do you swear from the testimony we got, about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So swear or affirm. Please state your full name for the record.
Brian Stankus, S.T.A.N.K.U.S., traffic engineer. We prepared a report dated September 24th. We indicated a general concurrence with the, with the traffic study methodology and conclusions. I think, again, there were a few technical issues that we wanted to hear a little bit more comment on, and we, we hope to hear those in the applicant's presentation.
Any, any questions for Brian?
Thank you.
All right. Um, that pretty well covers the staff reports, and you also had the report from the Environmental Commission, Shade Tree and so on, which were included in your package. If there are no questions at this point, I think we'll move on and, and hear from the applicant. Mr. Lettisi, do you want to start?
Do you want to start, Tom?
Yes. Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the planning board. My name is Tom Lettisi, and I'm an attorney, Pepper Hamilton, representing the applicant Landwin Development Corp. Just to provide some background, you've heard already a lot of, a lot about the development, but just to review a few things for you to keep in your mind as you listen to our presentation. This is an application for preliminary final subdivision and site plan approval for the last phase, known as Phase Five, for the Province Line Woods development. And it's being done pursuant to the residential cluster provision, Division Nine of the Princeton Ordinance. We also are seeking an extension of the vesting period associated with the grant of approval from the usual two years to six years, as is permitted by NJSA 4055D dash 52B of the municipal Anus Law, taking into account the number of homes and the, the market. The board has granted similar extended vestings for the various phases of this development. So the Province Line Wood Development was originally approved as a five-phase, forty-three-lot subdivision in 1988. Three lots were deeded to the township as open space, leaving forty home lots. Phases one through four consist of twenty-four homes, which are all built today. So the Phase Five lands, that's the subject of this application, is comprised of one-hundred-and-fifty-three acres and is designated as Lot 602 and Block 102 on the tax map, and is zoned RA with a small portion located in RB. It received final approval from the board in 2012 for sixteen residential lots with access from Province Line Road, which is consistent with, with, with the approval of the overall project in 1988. This current application for Phase Five originally proposed to change the access to the lots through an extension of Frederick Court in order to avoid crossing environmentally sensitive lands near Province Line Road. And we appeared before this board in April of this year to begin our presentation, as you know. At that meeting, we were met with major concerns by a number of residents involving the proposed extension of Frederick Court to service these lots. In response to those concerns, the applicant withdrew the Frederick Court access proposal and went back to the planning drawing board, if you will, to determine if the Province Line Road only access could be revived. And after several meetings with NJDEB officials on the site, it was determined that by using an alignment of an old access road over existing culverts and in clustering the development, thereby eliminating a wetlands crossing, an access from Province Line Road was indeed feasible and can be permitted by the DEP. Thus, the plan that we are presenting to you this evening. So, and you've heard already some of this data, but I just want to emphasize it again. The cluster subdivision proposes nineteen single-family lots, ranging in size from sixty-four-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety-four square feet to one-hundred-and-thirty-eight-nine-hundred-and-ninety-eight square feet. Two preserved open-space lots are proposed, which total approximately one-hundred-and-fourteen acres, or seventy-five percent of the track, together with walking paths. And all of this is done in accordance with the cluster option of the ordinance. As was confirmed by Mr. Bridger, your zoning officer, the plan is variance-free. Most importantly, the use of the cluster allows for a compact form of development located in the upland portion of the site, so that the environmentally sensitive lands, that is, the freshwater wetlands, stream corridors, et cetera, are protected from disturbance. And this is a critical objective, particularly in this part of the municipality, as you know, which is called the ridge. So in providing the extensive amount of open space and walking trails, the applicant is entitled, because of those benefits that we are providing under this plan, to a, a density bonus of three lots, and we will explain how we achieve the three additional lots. Mr. West noted that there are some conditions of the prior approval that he is recommending be carried forward to this application, should it be approved, and we have no objection to those conditions. Filing in terms of the various reports, which you've heard summaries of this evening, will address in our testimony, but I can say for the record that, except for a relatively handful of items, we're generally in agreement with the recommendations contained in your professional reports. So with that, I'd like to begin our presentation, unless there's some questions for me.
Tom, just, just a clarification. Um, I thought that there, it said there are two variances, and the report indicated two variances. You said it's variance-free. Derek, can you clarify?
Yeah, I, uh, there are no variances. The open space lot, I, I reviewed it. Upon further review, it was complying, so.
Thank you, Derek. So with that, I'd like to bring Mr. Brown back to, to give his presentation. And, uh, I'm sorry, Jeff, just housekeeping, we're going to be doing this electronically, so you'll be seeing some plans before you on your screens. Jerry, I don't know how you want to mark it, maybe as a single A1 or A1?
Yeah, yeah, let's mark this, the slideshow is A1.
Fine, thank you.
Okay. Um, probably a lot of what I'm going to say might be duplicative of what Dan has already said and Jack has already said, but there are some, I think, differences, discrepancies between, in, in numbers in a few areas. So I'll just try to go through the, the part that's duplicative fairly quickly. The project site is Lot 602, Block 102, consisting of one-hundred-and-fifty-two-point, one-hundred-and-fifty-two-point-eight acres of land, located between Drake's Corner Road and Cherry Valley Road in the northwest corner of the municipality. The site is totally wooded and slopes moderately and steeply from south to north to unnamed tributaries to Beden's Brook, near the northwesterly and northeastally corners of the track. There are significant areas of wetlands on the track in the northerly portion, a total wetland area of twenty-eight-point-two acres, or eighteen-point-five percent of the site. There are transition areas associated with these wetlands, which are fifty feet for the wetlands that are designated as intermediate resource value and a hundred-and-fifty-foot buffers for exceptional value resource areas, both of which are present. The extent and the classification of these wetlands has been confirmed by NJDEP in, in a letter of interpretation issued in January of 2016. The, the site lies primarily in the RA zoning district, with a very small portion along the southerly boundary lying in the RB zone. The conventional zoning requirement in this area is four-acre lots. However, clustering pursuant to sections 10B, 256, and Division Nine of the ordinance are permitted within this zone, and the proposed development utilizes that cluster option. The proposed project consists of nineteen single-family homes, resident, or single-family lots, on approximately thirty-eight-point-two acres, or twenty-five percent of the tract, with two open-space lots totaling one-hundred-and-fourteen-point-fifty-six acres, or seventy-five percent of the tract. There will be two detention basins located in the, in the larger open-space lot that will occupy approximately four and a half acres of that total open-space area. The balance of the open space will be permanently preserved, with the exception of bike paths and/or walking trails that will provide public access to the preserved lands. The proposed residential lots will range in size from one-point-four-eight acres to three-point-nineteen acres, with sixteen of the nineteen lots having areas slightly less than one and a half acres. The clustered lots in the RA zone are required to have areas of at least ten-thousand square feet, or point-two-three acres, so we're considerably larger than the minimum allowed lot size. The proposed development includes three bonus lots in accordance with the cluster density bonus in the ordinance. This represents a bonus of twenty percent over the sixteen-lot conventional subdivision. And as, as Jack has said, we did submit a convention, a conforming conventional subdivision plan with the application. The twenty percent bonus is based upon providing in excess of five-thousand lineal feet of public walking paths in the open space, which yields a ten percent bonus under the ordinance, and an additional ten percent bonus for open-space area exceeding fifty percent of the tract by more than twenty percent. So that's a net bonus of twenty percent on sixteen lots, which is a three-lot bonus. So that's how we get to the nineteen lots. The proposed residential lots will be located on a single cul-de-sac, approximately twenty-nine-hundred feet in length. The street will be constructed with twenty-two-foot-wide paved cartway with laid-back Belgian-block curbs on either side, and it'll be located in a fifty-foot-wide right-of-way to be dedicated to the municipality. There will be street trees planted on both sides of the street at a spacing of approximately thirty feet on center, in accordance with recommendations of the board's professionals. The plan that we submitted actually showed a fifty-foot spacing, but we will be reducing that in accordance with the recommendations from, from your staff. And we'll work with the Shade Tree Commission and the board's professionals to, to get a revised plan together showing that. All of the lots will be serviced by public water from a proposed water line that will extend from the New Jersey American Water Company's line in Province Line Road through the proposed cul-de-sac to the water tower lot located at the end of Frederick Court. The lots will also be served by individual on-lot septic systems, which will require final approval from the municipal health department on a lot-by-lot basis prior to issuance of building permits. We have done soil testing witnessed by the Board of Health on all of the lots and demonstrating septic suitability. And regarding the question on the size of the system, actually, on one of the previous plans, we had actually designed all of the septic systems, and the systems that we're showing on the plan now are consistent with the sizes of, of the designs of those systems previously done. Gas service will be provided by extension of existing gas mains from Province Line Road through the proposed street to the end of the cul-de-sac, and wire-served utilities will be similarly extended underground from connection points in Province Line Road to service the nineteen lots. The street lighting that were proposed is limited to two pole-mounted fixtures, one loaded, located at the intersection of the new road with Province Line Road, and the second located at the end of the cul-de-sac. And in accordance with comments from the board's professionals, the plans will be revised to specify LED light fixtures for these streetlights. Stormwater runoff will be con- collected- Stormwater runoff will be collected in the proposed street in a pipe and inlet system, and it'll be conveyed to either of two stormwater detention basins on the property. Pond number one is located on the southerly side of the proposed roadway, approximately five hundred feet east of Province Line Road, and will control runoff from the westerly seven hundred feet of the new roadway. And it will discharge to a small waterway flowing northerly off the site. Pond number two is located behind proposed lots on the northerly side of the new roadway, near its midpoint, and will control runoff from the balance of the project, and will discharge through three separate outlets towards wetlands and waterways in the northerly part of the tract. The stormwater management system has been designed in accordance with the Residential Site Improvement Standards and the New Jersey Stormwater Management Regulations. Post-development peak runoff rates will be reduced to eighty percent, seventy-five percent, and twenty-five percent of the pre-development rates for the one hundred ten and two-year storm respectively. Water quality treatment will also be provided to provide eighty percent TSS removal from runoff, and groundwater recharge provided in the basins will reduce the post-development two-year storm runoff volumes from pre-development runoff volumes, which is the requirement of the standards. As I've already mentioned, there'll be two open space lots occupying one hundred to fourteen point fifty-six acres, or seventy-five percent of the tract, approximately one hundred and ten acres of which will be permanently preserved. Additionally, there'll be a one hundred and fifty-foot wide greenbelt easement along the rear of ten of the lots, of the development lots that border the southerly boundary of the tract. This easement will cover approximately additional seven acres of the property.
Jeff, while you're turning your page, I'll ask a question going back to the stormwater management system.
Yes.
Can you provide the approximate distance of the basins to Cherry Valley Road?
The larger basin is approximately a thousand feet south of Cherry Valley Road.
Okay, and is that where the water today flows to?
Right, all of the water flows from the track from the southerly boundary toward Cherry Valley Road. There is a high point roughly in the middle of the boundary along Cherry Valley Road where the water splits. And so, yes, the water is flowing to where it does in the pre-development condition.
Thank you.
Okay, we, as required by the cluster ordinance, we're proposing a public walkway within the open space. And the walkway, if you look on the plan, it's the heavy black line that runs from Cherry Valley Road to the south and connects to the end of the proposed cul-de-sac, also connects to the lot to the east that fronts on Drake's Corner Road, and then continues around behind the proposed detention basin, roughly paralleling the cul-de-sac street. That pathway, particularly the one that runs from the easterly lot out to Cherry Valley Road, is intended to connect similar pathways in open space to the south in Princeton and across Cherry Valley Road in Montgomery Township. And will provide access to the open space to residents of development as well as to the community at large. As discussed in your professionals' memos, the final alignment and configuration of that path will be subject to field sighting to the satisfaction of the municipal engineer. Just a couple of other comments. There was a comment in Jack's memo regarding a five-foot wide waterline easement, which, if you look on the plan, extends across, near the southerly boundary of the property. From the water tank extends east and west. Currently, we don't really know if there's anything in that easement. It seems that that may have been an easement for a connection to maybe the lot that fronts out on Province Line Road. Jack was asking that we expand that easement to twenty feet in width. And although we don't specifically have a problem with that, we think that it may be abandoned, so we want to have the opportunity to investigate that, find out if it's still needed, if it could maybe be relocated. But we would like to work with Jack to just resolve that to everyone's satisfaction. Regarding tree replacement, we're in complete agreement with the comments of your professionals that we would like to replant as many of the trees on-site as possible. There is a lot of confusion about the number of trees that are being removed, and part of that is because in the plans we submitted, there was an area in the center of the proposed roadway where we hadn't shown the existing trees. But the count that we did just before the meeting, we're now showing that there's only four hundred, roughly four hundred and twenty trees to be removed for the roadway and the proposed septic systems and the detention basins and the storm easements. So that's, the fourteen-hundred number was based on the plan that we came in with previously this year that had the Frederick Court extension. So we've reduced that number specifically. The four thousand number, I think, was just really a misinterpretation of the plan. In the legend, it showed four thousand underlined, and it said, "tree to be removed." The four thousand was really just an indication of a tree number. So I think that was just kind of a misinterpretation of something that wasn't clearly represented on the plan. But the real number, as we see it right now, is about four hundred and twenty trees for the road, the septics, and the stormwater facilities. There will be additional clearing, as Jack mentioned, for each of the lots when the individual homes are sited and designed. In my opinion, the cluster plan that we're proposing now is far superior to any of the previously proposed conventional plans, both in terms of reducing construction impacts to the trees, the waterway corridors, the riparian zones, the wetlands, and the transition areas, and in terms of limiting future impacts from homeowners. Nearly three-quarters of the entire tract will be in preserved open space and easements rather than on individual residential lots, which will, should nearly eliminate the potential for future encroachment in these areas.
Madam Chair, there was a comment from Mr. West in his report concerning a bike path extension from the proposed cul-de-sac of this project to connect with Frederick Court. We're going to leave that to the planning board. We will do whatever the board decides. If you feel that needs to be installed, we'll agree to do that. It will require an easement through the water tower lot to accomplish that. Water tower lot is owned by my client, Landwin Development Corp. We call it the water tower lot because that's where the water towers are, but that lot actually can become a building lot in the future. But there may be people in the audience who have a different view of whether that bike path should be installed, so I'm sure you'll hear some difference of opinion on that.
Could I just ask about the path, the master plan path? Is that going to be a responsibility of the homeowners' association?
Are we talking about the path along Cherry Valley?
No.
When and if that's ever constructed?
No, the one that wanders through the site.
So the question is, is that the maintenance of those? Yes.
Okay.
But it will be open to the public. It's required, they'll have easements to allow public access.
Okay, so, yes.
Two questions, just a quick one about the water tower. There was a part of the report that talked about difficulties or potential difficulties with water pressure because the water tower is not high enough relative to these homes. But my understanding is the slope of the site is down from south to north, so the water tower is higher than any of these lots and elevated significantly above the ground. So could you explain why there's a potential problem with water pressure there? And if that water tower is already serving houses that are uphill from this new development, are they experiencing water pressure difficulties?
I don't know that it's servicing lots that are uphill. But as you say, are lots are all downhill? The question is, are they far enough downhill to get adequate water pressure? I believe the minimum requirement is twenty PSI in the street, and I don't know that that tower will provide that, particularly for the lots that are on the uphill side of the road. I think probably the ones on the downhill side of the road would be okay. The ones on the uphill side of the road may require pumps, though.
And the other question that I have is the grading. It relates to grading and tree protection. On all of these lots, you've essentially just created a pretty conventional building pad, a level pad, to build the homes on. And it seems like a real shame, you know, it requires a lot of disturbance to the existing landscape. The little creativity from the architects who build these homes, it's not at all necessary. And in fact, you know, to get walkout basements and things like that, having the grades be more natural seems advantageous. And you would also be able to preserve more of the existing trees. You know, I have in mind the development, if people are familiar with it, of the Preserve. It's off the Great Road, and that was a development was done maybe twenty, twenty-five years ago. And they really, it's a fantastic neighborhood with a lot of mature trees that were preserved during that development. I'm just wondering if we can, one of the suggestions in the PEC report was to do more natural grading. And I'm, it's, I'd like to get your reaction to that idea.
Great. Well, we're expecting that each of the individual lots is going to be subject to probably a custom design. And I agree, I think if you built some additional walls, we are proposing some walls, but I think with the addition of some additional walls, maybe use some of the rocks on-site to build walls that you probably could reduce some of the grading and save some more trees. But again, we're not, the applicant is not a builder, they're just the developer. So that would be up to the builder, and hopefully, they would realize the benefit of doing that.
I guess if there's any way to do so, I'd like to impose a condition that we try to, I don't know if there's a way to do it, Jack, but try to impose a requirement to.
We have that in our memo, that they come back with individual plot plans in an effort to save more trees. I mean, I've looked at some of the lots, and there are ways that you can save more of the trees on the individual lots. So I mean, I think you just emphasize that if.
I'd like to craft a condition to try and require that.
I strongly agree with that.
And can I just add one more point to that? That Environmental Commission's report also, I thought, made a very thoughtful presentation about, what's it called, DIL, LID, got it backwards, Low Impact Development, which I thought, I mean, I think all of us, including, I'm sure, all of you, find the development kind of painful in that, on that particular site. And to the degree that we can mimic or accommodate the shape of the land minimize impact, seems to me to be in at least our ethical best interest, if not our most efficient interest. And I don't know how much we can control that in our conditions for the application. I know there are limits, but the idea of making as low an impact on the, on the land and amongst the trees as we can seems to me in the spirit of the task.
May I just add? It is also completely in keeping with the requirement to use non-structural strategies to the maximum extent possible practicable, however you interpret the word practicable. I interpret it to mean doable. And massive regrading is just not consistent. The LID, Low Impact Development, closely tracks these non-structural strategies that are right in the state stormwater rule as requirements. So I don't think we're asking for a lot to comply with the letter and the spirit of the stormwater rule.
Well, I think the largest low-impact development technique that we are employing is we're clustering lots. And that has done more to preserve the site than anything else we could have really done. I think because of the slopes, we are somewhat limited in what we can do as far as, I don't think we want to have swales out here because they would be too steep, they would be erosive, you'd never be able to stabilize them. So I think to the extent that we could, we've tried to use low-impact techniques. But on a site like this, especially when you're clustering it into the smaller lots, it's difficult to do that. But we are, on the other hand, saving seventy-five percent of the tract.
You're right, the value is higher.
If I could chime in?
When a house is built to the site, the value is higher, no question.
Did you want to say something? Oh, you were just saying. Yeah, no, so if I could chime in, I mean, I, so this Holter proposal is very conflicting because, you know, we reviewed the previous one, and, you know, it wasn't very great in terms of impact. And I think that this is better, but I'm also very concerned about the impact as well for this. I mean, you know, while you've kind of avoided the wetlands, although, except for the entrance, with this one, you know, you now are basically developing on these steep slopes, which I think, you know, I didn't, it didn't quite register quite before. And, you know, now looking at the topography, and it's just, it seems very troubling to me. I mean, I'm curious, I don't know if you can say off the top of your head, like, what the current existing slope of the area is? You know, what's the grade change from kind of the highest point of development to the lowest point of development? And, you know, I guess you feel like it's possible engineer did the engineering, but, I mean, I can imagine that you're going to have to completely re-engineer that whole terrace strip of land in terms of grading.
Yeah, the steepest slopes that we're developing on are between fifteen and twenty-five percent, which is consistent with the ordinance, which prohibits development on slopes steeper than twenty-five percent. And as I said, and as Jack reiterated also, we are going to try to encourage the developer to eliminate some of the clearing by building some additional walls and doing some other creative grading things, walkout basements. We have actually designed some of them on this plan, those walkout basements, which work pretty well on the northerly side, but not on the southerly side. So I think to the extent that we can, we've tried to use low-impact techniques. And as I said, by saving seventy-five percent of the site in preserved open space, that's the major benefit.
Right. And I guess, going back to the basin, I wanted to ask this earlier, but, I mean, I guess this question also applies to the septic systems. In terms of how you're creating that basin, I mean, are you going to basically clearcut all the trees, you know, in that area? And then replant them?
Actually, what we're doing, and if you look at the plan and you see the yellow.
So you're just going to clear cut that area?
Right, the yellow is the area that's cleared, and what we're doing is just creating a berm around the existing woods to contain the water. So we're not excavating the basin into the ground, we're actually building a berm on the low end to trap the water.
So you're saying that, you know, everywhere there's green, you don't intend to clear cut, that will be preserved?
Right, everywhere that we're showing, the darker green with the trees is intended to be preserved, and the yellow is the area, the yellow screen is the area that would be cleared.
Yeah. And could you speak a little bit about how you plan on dealing with the entrance in terms of going over the? of going over the wetlands? I mean, will it be culverted? Or is there some sort of other way that you're going to deal with letting?
Actually, there are two culverts that are, that were installed in, I guess in around 1989, I think. Based on the original approval of this tract, they actually went in and cleared the first part of that entrance road and built the two culverts. I think that was because there were some changes coming in the flood hazard rules, and they wanted to beat those changes. But, and part of our discussion in convincing DEP that this made more sense than coming in off of Frederick Court was that if we could use those existing culverts and that existing cleared sort of a driveway, actually, the hunters have been using that for quite a while to get into the tract. So even though it's designated technically as wetlands, the area where the culverts are and where that woods road is are really not wetlands. So we're trying to use the existing cleared area, the existing culverts to access the site rather than coming in in a totally new location.
Right. Okay.
Thank you, Wanda. I feel compelled to answer when asked about bicycle matters, about access off of Frederick Court. So access to the open space, if you could zoom out a little bit, you think that the public, the primary public access to the open space will be off Cherry Valley Road, correct? Is that...
Well, either off Cherry Valley Road or off the proposed cul-de-sac.
Oh, okay. So my opinion, and I, it's not carved in stone, and I'd love to hear from the neighbors on this, is that it, from a cycling standpoint, I've ridden Drake's Corner Road hundreds of times, and it's a beautiful road to ride on. And at the end, it takes a couple of curves there and dips down, and then there's a rise as you come up to Province Line. I think for cyclists who are not as comfortable on the road, that an access off Frederick Court would be a good thing. I know right now, at the end of the cul-de-sac, there's sort of a trail that is, that there's a, with a gate, correct? That must be like a fire road or some access that's used to...
It's access for the water company to the tank.
Okay.
And it actually has a locked gate on it.
Okay. So pending feedback from the neighbors, I'd be in favor of extending any bike access to that area.
Anyone else? Yes, Jack?
Just one comment on the clearing limits. You know, obviously, we're going to ask whoever develops this property to save as many of the existing trees on the lots as you can. But what you don't see here is that the people, when they want a pool, a poolhouse, tennis court, that even though the trees are saved initially, ultimately, a lot more of the lot gets cleared. And the issue is, you know, can you stop somebody from putting a pool or a tennis court or whatever else on their property?
Can you make a conservation easement in the Green Belt? Or is the Green Belt a conservation easement?
The Green Belt would be, would prohibit that. That's that, you know, the back portion of...
But the other, you're talking about the other?
The other lots. And in the remainder of the lot that's not in a Green Belt.
Yeah, I know different towns have different rules regarding pools and impervious coverage. If I remember correctly, in Princeton, we don't consider the area of the pool to be impervious.
Yes, we do.
Oh, we do.
That's one of the things we changed last year. So a pool is considered impervious. So obviously, they would have that limit, but...
Right.
There's even people that...
We'll just keep squeezing them.
Yep.
Do we place any limits on pools or tennis courts on steep slopes that are, you know, I don't know, between 15 and 25% or something?
No, the ordinance only has 25% as the cutoff.
Okay.
Okay. Does that conclude your formal presentation? Or move on?
We have, unless there's more questions for Mr. Brown, I'll ask our next witness to come forward.
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
So sworn or affirmed, please state your full name and spell your last name.
Nicholas Verderese, V-E-R-D-E-R-E-S-E.
Mr. Verderese, can you briefly provide the board your professional qualifications?
Yes, I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I have a bachelor's science degree in civil engineering from Rutgers University in 1990. I'm a principal founder of Dynamic Traffic located in 1904 Main Street, Lake Como, New Jersey. I regularly appear before boards throughout the state of New Jersey, 200-plus different boards.
I offer Mr. Verderese as an expert in traffic engineering.
Thank you. We accept his credentials.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're just going right with it.
Yes, go.
We did, our firm prepared a traffic impact study for this application. I was also part of the previous application back in 2012. I was at a different firm that we prepared a traffic impact study at that time for 16 residential units with access, as you heard, from Province Side Road. The current proposal is for 19 units. The access is the same opposite Stout Road. As far as the access is concerned, it's essentially built already in the location that's proposed, opposite Stout Road. It will provide adequate sightlines. There was a previous, in the previous resolution, there was language as to the requirement of that site triangle. As you're all aware, the, essentially, the roadway is wooded, the site is wooded up to the roadway. So there is some pruning, et cetera, that's required to provide that clear sightline, similar to what you see across the street at Stout Road. The roadway is generally straight in that area. There is a slight decline from south to north, but it will provide for adequate sightline for the, for the speed limits and that location for the driveway. The roadway is proposed at 22 feet wide, 50-foot right-of-way. There's a cul-de-sac at the end. We've provided a 50-foot cul-de-sac, which actually exceeds the Residential Site Improvement Standards requirement of 40, but that was at the request of the fire department. The roadway will meet all residential site improvement standards. We actually exceed the width by two feet, but it's a pretty common width for a rural roadway to provide about 22 feet. If you look at other subdivisions in the area, the roadways are essentially the same width. There's essentially a laid-back curb along the roadway to define the roadway, define the drainage pattern, keep soil from entering into the roadway. That will all operate, again, safely and efficiently as designed. All the centerline radii, et cetera, all meet the requirements of the residential site improvement standards. As far as the traffic impact study, we did do this study as if there was a brand-new 19 units, taking no credit for the previous 16 units that were approved. So in the highest peak hour, we look at how much, how many trips we anticipate this project to generate. The Institute of Transportation Engineers has a publication called Trip Generation, has data throughout the United States for all different types of land uses, one of them being single-family homes. Interestingly, there was a comment in your engineer's review letter as to this being larger homes, say maybe larger than the average-sized home. And would that impact how many trips the project would generate? There is no specific published data by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. They've lumped the category "single-family home" in for this type of use, so I don't anticipate it being much different than typical averages. He does note, Brian notes in his review letter, that even if the traffic was higher than what we projected, which already is de minimis in nature, it wouldn't have any surmountable impact, any significant impact to the surrounding roadways. We took traffic counts out along Province Line Road and Stout Road early June of this year during typical commuter peak hours. Traffic volumes are relatively light on that roadway. Interestingly, Province Line Road is actually classified in your master plan as a secondary arterial roadway, but because it isn't a through roadway and actually has to turn at Drake's Road, it never really reaches the level of traffic that normally you would see on a, on a secondary arterial, similar to Cherry Valley Road, which has the same exact classification, but carries about 1,000 peak-hour trips along it, while the peak-hour trips along Province Line Road doesn't even reach 100 vehicles. So essentially, we did some analysis of the driveway and how it'll operate. It operates at exceptional levels of service, again, because the traffic volumes are very low in the area. Brian had also asked for me to give some commentary on the intersection at Province Line Road and Cherry Valley Road. There are times when you get to the intersection there, traffic volumes are moderate along Cherry Valley Road. As I said, about 1,000 peak-hour trips. So you have to wait for a gap at times to get out at that location. There is some challenges. There's some overgrown shrubs and overgrown trees, et cetera, at the intersection. It would be my recommendation, whether the township did it or someone came in when we were maybe clearing, to do a little pruning of trees at that intersection will definitely help, even the existing condition. So I recommend that being something that the municipality might like to look into at future time. Again, the sightlines will be clear at that location. We projected in our study about half of our traffic to go towards Cherry Valley and half of it to actually go towards Drake's Corner Road. The volumes are so low, it doesn't really matter whether we took them all and went one direction or the other, the general impact of 20 peak-hour trips is going to be unnoticed by the users of this roadway network. Just, I guess, a conclusion, I went through Brian's review letter, I generally agree with everything in there. I just hit on a couple of the items there. And in the conclusion in his report, or throughout the report, the findings seem to be that he feels that this site has minimal impact to the surrounding roadways. Our traffic study corroborates that, and we agree with that finding. There is also, I guess, an off-track fee that this project generates that Jack had talked about earlier. I think he calculated an $87,000 number. So obviously, part of that is associated with any traffic associated with this project. 20 trips, however, I wouldn't equate to 87,000. I would think that would be high, but that's the number. I guess we were bound by that number. But I would say that any contributions that we are making towards that off-track is more than enough to cover any of the impacts from this project. I think that's all I have.
He's available for questions.
Yes. Any questions, anyone? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, you're welcome.
And finally, I'd like to call Mr. Kyle.
Raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed, please state your full name and spell your last name.
Sure. First name is James, last name Kyle, K-Y-L-E. Kyle Planning, Design in Hopewell, New Jersey.
Mr. Kyle, can you briefly advise the board on your professional qualifications?
I can. I have a bachelor's science in environmental planning and design from Rutgers University, which I received in 1996. I've been a practicing planner for about 20 years. Currently advise a number of municipal boards as a consultant in six communities in Hunter and Warren County. Testified before over 190 boards in the state and qualifies as an expert in planning. Currently licensed as a professional planner, also a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners.
Thank you, except his qualifications.
I also, Mr. Kyle, as an expert in land use planning.
Thank you. So my scope was fairly limited on this application. As we've discussed, we don't have any variances associated with it. I think we've confirmed a lot of the information that the board needs to make some specific findings this evening. I'll run through that. Just wanted to give the board some brief testimony on the request for extended vesting under the municipal land use law. So in preparation for this, I have reviewed all the plans. We've reviewed the letters from your professionals, I've also reviewed the ordinance and also the municipality's natural resource inventory as well, because that is part of some of the findings that the board needs to make. As we've talked about, we're seeking preliminary and final subdivision approval with the extended vesting. There are no variances that are necessary for this project. We designed it in accordance with all the standards in the residential cluster section. And what I'll do is run through, so this property is located in the RA district. There's a, as we've discussed, there's a very small portion of the zone line in this area for the RB is kind of a squiggly line that runs all over the zoning map. So the majority, and I would say 98% of this project, is within the RA district. So the project meets all the area yard and bulk requirements under the residential cluster provisions, and there are some findings that the board, and it says specifically in the residential cluster section, that the board needs to make specific written findings on these matters. So there's A through E, I'm sorry, A through F, and these were outlined in the staff memos, so you can follow along. But the first is that departures by the proposed development from zoning regulations, if any, otherwise applicable to the track, conform to the applicable standards of this division. And we can confirm that they do conform to those requirements in that division. That the proposals for maintenance and conservation of the common open space are reliable, and such common open spaces consistent with the requirements for same-as-here-and-after set forth in this division. As we've talked about, the open space here will be permanently preserved, but it will be managed and maintained and owned by the homeowners association in perpetuity. That adequate provision has been made through the physical design of the residential cluster for public services, control over vehicular and pedestrian traffic, the amenities of light and air and recreation and visual enjoyment. So all public services, as we've said, are provided. We have gas and water that's going to come in from the street. Sanitary sewer is handled by onsite septic systems. All the roadway has been designed in accordance with the residential site improvement standards, as Mr. Brown and Mr. Verderese had confirmed. And as well, we've provided what we feel is an attractive development alternative to the conventional plan, one that will result in benefits to the community at large as well as the residents that live in this development. We do have recreation onsite as well, so we do meet that provision through the walking path and then ultimately through any bike paths that are established on Cherry Valley Road in the future. D is that the residential cluster will not have an unreasonably adverse impact upon the area in which it is proposed to be established. This evaluation shall include reference to the natural resources inventory. So I reviewed the 2010 environmental resource inventory in detail. Really, the issues here, environmental issues surrounding wetlands and required buffers, as well as what the environmental resource inventory identifies as critical forest habitat on this property. So with the cluster, we're able to preserve the vast majority. The site, as you can see from the aerial photograph that's up on the screen now, is entirely wooded, with the exception of a small portion of it that is at the proposed roadway along Province Line Road. So we're able to preserve 75% or about 114 acres of this site. We're minimizing habitat fragmentation through this development technique, so we're trying to minimize as greatly as we can any of the clearing associated with this. And as you saw through the plan that we had previously, the yellow areas, we've tried to leave some areas of trees interspersed within this development to do that. So we feel that this responds really to a lot of the things that are identified in the natural resource inventory that should be preserved. So we're doing the best that we can in this development scheme to preserve as much of that as possible. E is, in the case of a residential cluster which contemplates construction over a period of years, that the terms and conditions intended to protect the interests of the public and of the residents, occupants, and owners of the proposed development and the total completion of the development are adequate. Again, as we've talked about, there is an existing homeowners association. This open space and anything associated with this development will be part of the previous homeowner documents that were included. So we feel that the protections that are provided through those documents and the continuation of the association is adequate to protect the interests, again, not only of the residents that will live in this development, but of residents that live in the other phases or on lots that surround this location. And finally, F, that the residential cluster complies with all applicable requirements of this division and chapter. Our team has reviewed this. I know that the town, the municipality's consultants have reviewed... consultants have reviewed it as well and confirmed that we do meet all the requirements that are in the residential cluster provisions of the ordinance. So upon review of these standards, I think we do meet all of them, and that the board would be within its rights to make specific written findings that we do meet all of these provisions and that the cluster ordinance has met. Now, in terms of the vesting, the municipal land use law, Section 52B, does permit the board for subdivisions on lands more than 150 acres, which this one is. We're, I think, 152, three. So we are entitled, under that section, for the board to grant extended vesting. So the municipal land use law currently in 52A allows for two years of protection with three one-year extensions eligible. What we're requesting and what this section allows the board to do is to grant a minimum of two years of vesting, but you can grant really whatever you feel reasonable based on the specifics of the development. So I think with the number of lots that we have here and the extent of the project, and again, we're requesting just an additional year. Most developers are essentially entitled to five years, so we're really just requesting one additional year, you know, related to this, basically based on the number of lots that we have in the development that'll occur, you know, probably not all at once. So it's going to take time for this to unfold. So we feel that the vesting is warranted based on the type of the project and the number of lots that are proposed. So that would be the request that we make. And again, the municipal land use law does permit the board to do this, so.
Thank you, Mr. Kyle.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions? Anyone?
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Madam Chair, that completes our direct presentation. We're available for more questions or to listen now to the public.
Well, if there are no more immediate board questions, maybe we should move to the public portion of the meeting and ask, let me open it to the public and ask that you come up to the microphone. You have to speak directly into the microphone, give your name, where you live, and you'll have about three minutes, if that's all right, so.
All right. Good evening, board members, staff, and other attendees. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Excuse me.
Just a quick-
We actually swear in all the members of the public, so I'm going to swear you in. If you could raise your right hand.
Yeah.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
So sworn or affirmed, could you please state your full name and spell your last name?
John Koalak, K-O-W-A-L-A-K. I live in Lot 5, the lower left corner, adjoining the access road. Quick clarification, is this the Q and A, or is this my remarks or public statements?
You mean, can you question the professionals who've spoken and the applicant? Yes, you can, if you want.
Okay.
And you could give comments at the same time?
Okay, great. So I strongly oppose this development proposal and urgently ask that the Princeton Planning Board fulfill their duty and reject the proposed development plan as it stands. I've got several objections, first of which is on an environmental basis. This plan is unnecessarily harmful to the environment, particularly in its use of an access route that does not minimize the impact to the most sensitive freshwater wetlands on the site. This was acknowledged by Landwin in their 2017 proposal, where access was proposed via Frederick Court. It's also in direct conflict with the recommendations of Princeton Environmental Commission, which were reported in September. The shorter viable alternative via Frederick Court does not plow through any of the protected freshwater wetlands and is the access route recommended by the Princeton Environmental Commission. I also would question why access routes, whether access routes along Cherry Valley Road have or have not been considered. Secondly, I've got some questions and concerns around some of the commentary made today around some of the representations made tonight or in the planning documents. There's been several comments made about the access road via Province Line and whether permits have been obtained from the New Jersey DEP. So it's my understanding that no permits have been approved or submitted or subject to any public commentary. I am in ongoing discussions with the NJ DEP to obtain further information regarding that, and also questioning and challenging the commentary around an old access road through that area, interested in how old that is and whether there's evidence of that road existing. Having lived next to that, I've observed Landwin hiring loggers and clearing, as some of the commentary is made earlier, of that land in the past three or four years. So I've got concerns whether there have been approvals from the township or the GEP for that logging activity over the past couple of years, or culverts that appear to have built in recent years. Also have concerns with the inconsistency of this proposal with the Princeton Master Plan, which has the target of preserving the entirety of this tract as preserved land. This is clearly not in accordance with that, and the spirit of trying to preserve sensitive wetlands is clearly not being upheld by accessing a road over and through wetlands, rather than the prior proposal. So I'm very interested in the flip-flop between Frederick and the new access road and the dialogue that went on there. From a personal level, clearly, where we live, our quality of life is impacted, really harmed by this. My wife and family couldn't join me here today, but our children play on the lawn that's going to be right next to the access road. The value of our home will be severely impacted, our ability to sell the house, if that's what it comes to with the noise. I know there's been discussions around quality of life raised from the prior Frederick Court presentation concerns. I would like to understand that and also note that there's, I think, three people living on Frederick Court. There's now three people impacted along the new access road, so certainly equivalent impacts from equality of life. The environmental impacts certainly are along the stormwater, the storm, the freshwater wetlands are more severe with this path. So we have a series of requests that we'd like to make, but I understand the Planning Board does not accept any additional comments or submissions, so I'll try to see if I can get those along through other means. You know, this proposal appears to be a hasty rewrite in response to concerns of a few impacted residents. We petition the board to reject the current proposal and instead ask Landwin to consider other access points or other access routes that do not impact sensitive wetlands and which considers the impacts on an input from all affected stakeholders, not just a few. There was a comment made earlier around the water line potentially being abandoned. So with some diligence, I can confirm that that water line feeds my house, so please don't deem it abandoned and put a house, as on that map shows, on top of it. Interested in the Planning Board's deliberations and conclusions, and I have not engaged attorneys. I'm here to represent myself, my concerns, my concerns of my family. But certainly, if the Planning Board reaches a conclusion we believe is unreasonable approving this proposed development, we will, you know, which causes harm to the environment, undue impact to certain residents, we will certainly consider a legal recourse and other actions against the town, developers, and others.
Right.
Along with other interested parties that we have not had time to fully coordinate with that live on Province Line Road, Cherry Valley Road, and Stout Road.
So we just had a question. You tried to submit something and-
What I was going to say is I do have written comments further detailing some of my concerns and objections. I'm happy to submit those to the board tonight or thereafter.
Yeah, why don't we do that, and we'll mark that as Exhibit 01.
Okay.
Do you have copies of that?
Yes, I do.
Okay, if you could give at least one to the applicant, one to our secretary, and if there are extra ones, maybe one to our staff and any others to the board.
Okay.
And there was a discussion of Q and A. I am interested in the-
Yeah, I think also there are other people who want to speak, so you've-
That's fine. I can stay here all night.
Yes, I noticed that, but I think that maybe we should move on to some of the others.
Okay, I would like the topic to be addressed around Frederick Court in terms of the decisions and drivers of that and input from others, impacted stakeholders, and the environment, which appears to be overlooked, although we do appreciate the clustering effect and the preservation of that area. But clearly, there's a path to make that less impactful. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I thought it'd be important for Mr. Brown to testify as to the amount of wetlands that are being disturbed under this new plan. Mr. Brown?
Yes, that was part of our discussion with DEP. And so what we did was we actually realigned the road a little bit, and the total wetlands disturbance based on the new entrance is less than an eighth of an acre. So it would qualify under a general permit 10A for minor road crossing.
Less than an eighth of an acre?
Less than an eighth of an acre, yes.
Okay, thank you. Are there other members of the public who'd like to come up and speak, please?
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed, if you could state your full name and spell your last name.
Robert Casey, C-A-S-E-Y. Madam Chairwoman, members of the board, thanks for the time this evening. I'm here on behalf of Jamie Brown, who is a homeowner at 757 Cherry Valley Road, which, if you look at that map, is just to the left of the sea in Cherry Valley, and has the distinction of being what I like to call the epicenter of water coming off of the ridge down towards Cherry Valley Road. So I'm here tonight after having met with Mr. Letizia and Mr. Brown yesterday to discuss the stormwater management plans and the impacts those will have on my client. I understand I'm a bit hamstrung in that I've been recently retained and just had the opportunity to review the reports, and would like the opportunity to retain an expert, to speak with you all, subject to the cross-examination of whoever is willing to ask the questions, about the impacts of stormwater in this unique plan, because it is. We're on a ridge, and the impacts that run down that ridge, although the calculations would lead one to believe that they will be less, I am not an expert in, will not try to be. The reality, however, is that Cherry Valley Road is very dangerous, and Cherry Valley Road is even more dangerous when there's water on it, and it's gotten worse in the last few years. One need only take a spin down Cherry Valley Road in the last month or two to discover that there's standing water almost always at the foot of my client's driveway. My client's property also has a tributary at Bedensbrook that flows through it. So in speaking with Mr. Letizia and with Mr. Brown, we discussed the basins that are proposed and where they're being routed, and they are being routed down into the wetlands that will then ultimately flow back down to the epicenter of water on Cherry Valley Road. If you look at the map there, Jeff, if you could hit the button again?
It is.
What a coincidence. So if you look to the map there and you look to the right of the, at the very north part of the map, sorry, the top of the map, where the epicenter of that, not, bad word again, the top of the triangle of Cherry Valley Road, everything to the left of that goes towards the left, right? So everything that comes down the hill goes to the left and ends up running down Cherry Hill, Cherry Valley Road to the left, okay? And everything to the right of that, when you get closer to the farm up there, the shared farm, everything goes to the right. So I would really like the opportunity to have an expert testify, to really enlighten us as to what really is happening on Cherry Valley Road. Recent bridge work was done on Cherry Valley Road. There's more bridge work that's proposed, and water is becoming a really big issue. This, obviously, despite what we've heard tonight, I'm of the belief that a contrary opinion from an expert will shed some light on this issue. I would say that the Princeton Environmental Committee report is a really good report, right? And I haven't heard anything from the applicant tonight as to what items specifically in that report are being addressed in the plan. So it's very well drafted. It makes a lot of sense, even to a lawyer like me. I would think that that would be something that is really important, given the sensitivity of this area and the impacts that it's going to have. So my request tonight is time to come back, that you not vote tonight, that you allow me to come back with my client and a professional engineer, who I've already reached out to a couple. But again, short notice, and I apologize for that, but I would like the opportunity to bring them back so that they could help enlighten the board a little bit. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. I thought that it was-
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Eric Goldberg. I'm an attorney with the firm of Stark &amp; Stark. I'm here tonight on behalf of Courtney and Missy McLaughlin at 16 Frederick Court. And in recent times, I've been in discussions with Landwin's attorney, Tom Letizia, as well as some of the board's professionals. And there are three issues that were concerning the McLaughlins. Two of them, I think, can be readily, easily disposed of, and we'll go over those first. The first is that they would request that in the event this were approved, no construction vehicles use Drake's Corner Road. Instead, they access the proposed project via Province Line. I don't believe Landwin has any objection to that. I've spoken with their attorney, Tom, about it, and we would just ask that that be a condition of approval. The second is that Frederick Court will not be extended through Lot 18.02, and basically will not be used to connect Frederick Court to this or any future development. Again, I've spoken with the applicant's, I'm sorry, the applicant's attorney, and I believe he is fine with that, and I would ask that he agree to that on the record and that that also be a condition of approval. The third is the one that I think has the greatest potential for disagreement, and that relates to the bike path. There are several concerns about having the bike path, as is proposed, goth or suggested, go connect to Frederick Court. The first is of a safety nature. One, I don't think you want to bring any more attention to the water tower in this post-9/11 world. Certainly, I don't think you want to make it any easier or any more accessible to get there. The second is for safety, not just for residents, but for the bicyclist. As noted by one of the board members, Mr. Quinn, certainly Drake's Corner is an aesthetically attractive road. It's also a very narrow road, and it also has a lot of curves, and there are concerns about it from a safety standpoint. If the bike path is needed, it should go to Cherry Valley Road, is our opinion, and that's also the opinion basically set forth in the 2017 master plan. Cherry Valley and Province Line are secondary arterial roads, and that's noted in the 2017 master plan circulation plan element. Drake's Corner is classified as a local road. As a local road, it's meant really just for neighborhood traffic and the traffic that's in front of it. The 2017 circulation plan element recommends extensive improvements to both Cherry Valley and Province Line. That document also- That document also notes that bicycle lanes should be included in Cherry Valley Road. So basically, this 2017 master plan amendment really supports a bicycle path on Cherry Valley as opposed to Drake's Corner for the reasons I just articulated. I think it's a safety concern, and that's really what is envisioned for the future of this municipality. And there, what I would consider planning reasons, good, valid planning reasons, not just from me, but from the people who create these documents in Princeton. From a pure legal standpoint, there's a green belt restriction on lot 18.02, which is the water tower lot. Basically, that restriction was initially required as part of the 1988 approval. It's Resolution 87-9, approved March 17, 1988. And what I'll do is I'll introduce that as exhibit Jerry, I'm not sure what we're up to, what you want to call this?
It would be O2.
O2. And that document does not allow a bicycle path. It allows certain things over the green belt restriction. A bicycle path is not one of them. Additionally, and I'll supply this document, the third to the last paragraph notes that no right of access to the general public to any portion of the green belt restricted area is intended to be included or created by this green belt restriction. So even if this were allowed, that paragraph precludes it. So legally, whether or not you think bicycle paths should connect to Frederick Court and then ultimately onto Drake's Corner, legally, it can't be done. It should also be pointed out that lot 18.02 is not part of this application. This application revolves around a different lot, and it's not part of this application. So for all of the reasons, whether it be the planning issues, whether it be the restriction, whether it be jurisdictional, however you want to look at it, all of these things basically preclude the bicycle path from connecting to Frederick Court. And my client would also like to speak. And I would ask her, Missy, if you could.
Hi, good evening. Do you need to say where I'm in?
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed, if you could state your full name and spell your last name.
It's Mary Ann McLaughlin. It's M-C-L-A-U-G-H-L-I-N. Thank you for listening to what I have to say. I've lived on Frederick Court for over 10 years with my family. When we first moved in, there was no gate or pillars on the access road up to the water tower. We were notified by the Princeton Police Department after we moved in that if, because of the post-9/11, that if there were any traffic that we saw, because I can visually see it from my backyard, going up that access road to notify them. We have notified them many times in the two-year process before the gate was put up and the pillars were installed. Once the gate was put up and the pillars were installed, there has been less attempt to get back to the water towers by cars, foot traffic, you know, which has caused less of the police to have to be notified. I'd like for you to see pictures that I took today. May I approach you all with pictures?
Yes, and we'll have those marked. It's exhibit O3. Why don't you hold up on that testimony?
I'm sorry, just one thing, Missy. Before we do, if we could, Jerry, we'll call these collectively O3.
Yes, so these are a series of different photographs?
Right, we can't hear you unless you speak into a microphone.
Thank you.
There are actually three photos. They're just of the same picture, some close-up. The gate is a locked gate. The key is only held by the water company. It is unlocked for maintenance to go back there by the maintenance company. They come back, they go there maybe once a month to check the monitoring of this water tower. There are pillars to the right and pillars to the left, cement pillars, that are spaced so that bicycles cannot go by there, so that pedestrians are limited access from that. And those pillars go right up to my property line. So clearly, the New Jersey Water Company does not want access through that road to those water towers. Those water towers feed, from what I understand from the water company, they feed not only Frederick Court, but Drake's Corner, Leonard Court, Bogart, Hagman, Stout, and Providence Line. That creates water pressure and water to all those homes. So you've got, you know, 36 to 40 homes that are in trouble if something happens to this water tower with our water. So I really feel that it's important for you all to understand that this is, you know, a safety issue for not having access to the bike path through this area of, you know, down lot 18.02 onto Frederick Court. Mr. Quinn, I commend your biking ability because I can't walk my dog down Drake's Corner without getting pushed off to the side of the road. I don't think that it's a great thing to have, you know, small children go down Drake's Corner or from the schools or anywhere else to get to access into that community. I think there are one, two, three access points that you already see on this plan that could be used for a bike path entrance without having to go by a water tower that feeds water to all of our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And just one thing, Tom, I just want to make sure that you would agree to the conditions we talked about.
I'm sorry, the first two.
I'm sorry, well, one of the things we had talked about is, in the event that this were approved, we would like the developer to agree that Frederick Court will not be extended. They agreed to abide by that, and Frederick Court will not be used, basically, to connect Frederick Court to this or any other future development. And basically, Frederick Court cannot be extended.
Yes, I will confirm on the record that if this plan, as proposed, is approved, the developer will not propose any extension of Frederick Court to connect with this cul-de-sac that is shown.
Okay.
Of course, the township, it's a municipal road. The township may have a different view, but the developer will not propose any extension.
Okay, and Eric, you're giving the easement to Eileen? Okay, and Mr. Kowalek, if you could give O1, and if we could get the other two photos from Ms. McLaughlin, and give them to our secretary as well. While that's going on, I just wanted to clarify about the easement. Mr. Goldberg was kind enough to send me a copy of the easement. It was actually just the Meadsen Bounds. It didn't have, it actually didn't say who the easement holder was. And he's quite correct when he says it doesn't permit bike paths and it prohibits public access. But Tom, is this lot is owned by Landwin?
It is, yes.
So I would assume it would have the right to change the easement?
Yes.
Okay. Eric, I don't know if you want to comment on that. I was saying that since Landwin owns the water tower lot, it would have the right to change the easement, which you accurately described. But I think it could change it so as to permit a bike path.
I mean, I'm hoping we're not having to, I guess, further argue that, but I'm not sure that's correct in light of the fact, I think, that might be on others. I think that's also part of a condition of approval in the 1988 resolution. And I don't know that Landwin can just unilaterally amend that.
That would have to be looked into, yeah. So this was an application for the water tower itself? Is that what was going on in 1980s with that application?
I don't remember off the top of my head what kind of led to it. I mean, obviously, this has gone through multiple iterations, this project, over the years. And off the top of my head, I don't recall exactly what was approved in that one.
The board, in any event, would have the power in some context of changing the condition, but we'd have to address that.
I'd also just like to offer a point of information about the circulation element and the adoption of the bicycle mobility plan last year. Just to make the point that the absence of bike lanes on a particular road is not intended to discourage bicycling on that road. Rather, the location of bike facilities on certain roads is predicated on the amount of car traffic usually that travels on those roads. So the fact that there's a bike lane on Cherry Valley Road is a reflection of the fact that it's hazardous to ride your bicycle there if you're not separated from the auto traffic. The fact that there's not a bike lane on Drake's Corner Road is not in any way intended to discourage bicycling on Drake's Corner Road.
Okay.
Is this the right time to, I don't want to stop the public comment, but it may be, well, the applicant has said that they're willing to agree to never ask for any extension or connection between Frederick Court and this new cul-de-sac. But I just want to understand whether or not, I assume that that does not tie Princeton, the town's, hands if at some point in the future it feels like it's the right thing to do, to connect these two cul-de-sacs. And I just want to make sure that we're clear on that. Not necessarily to wrestle that issue to the ground right now, but just to not let it.
Because they're public streets.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's correct. If you could raise your right hand?
Sure.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed, please state your full name and spell your last name.
Sure, my name is Michael L. Pisaro. It's P-I-S-A-U-R-O. I'm the policy director for the Watershed Institute, which used to be known as Stony Brook Millstone Watershed Association. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to discuss this project today. And to start off, we really appreciate the applicant's clustering in preserving those exceptional resource value wetlands to the north. That is very important. Those wetlands are, by their nature, exceptional and habitat for threatened and endangered species. That being said, we do have some concerns with this development. And the first and most obvious is the access road to Providence Line through the wetlands and the stream. So I do have a series of questions of the applicant's engineer, if I may. And I apologize, sir, we've met before and I completely have blanked on your name. Jeff, so Jeff, you had mentioned that the crossing of the wetlands was less than an eighth of an acre. How many linear feet is crossing the transition area, the wetland and the stream?
Well, the wetlands crossing itself is, I believe it's under 100 feet. So with the crossing of the buffers, which in that location are 50 feet, it's roughly 200 feet.
200 feet, okay.
200, 200 feet, was it?
In. Yes, the crossing itself of the wetlands is just under 100 feet, and the buffers are each 50 feet, so it's roughly 200 feet total.
Is that both wetland, both fingers of the wetland?
No, that's just the wetlands to the east. The other wetlands crossings are already installed. And I'm not exactly sure how it's going to work with DEP, but what we discussed was that those crossings would be taken out of the LOI as far as being wetlands and would not be considered regulated at all.
Okay.
Since they already exist.
And is the stream that is crossing, was that part of the 200 feet or is that part of the culverting that you think is going to come out of the LOI?
Well, actually, the two stream crossings are already culverted. The remainder is not really a stream, it's really just wetlands.
Okay, thank you. So first of all, my concern with the wetlands is, under our freshwater wetlands protection rules, if there is an alternative method of making the development occur that does not require impacting the wetlands, the rules tell us that is the choice DEP must make. They came with a development application last year that used Frederick's Court as an access road and avoided those wetlands. There is an alternative that is viable, that protects the wetlands, protects the stream, protects the environmental resources. So from a regulatory point of view, I believe DEP should be denying this. Obviously, we'll pursue this with DEP if necessary, but the planning board should look at this and say, there is an alternative. We don't necessarily need to impact these resources. So that was my first question. With my second question, have you measured how much total suspended solid is running off the property currently?
No.
Okay, and are you aware that there is a Raritan Basin total maximum daily load that has been approved by the Department of Environmental Protection in May of 2016?
I believe that was mentioned in the environmental report, yes.
Okay, and did you change anything of your stormwater management to allocate for that TMDL?
No, because that is not a regulatory document. We are regulated by the residential site improvement standards, which reference the state stormwater standards, and the requirement in that is reduction of 80% to 80% total suspended solids in the post-development condition. So that is not a regulatory standard.
So two points on that. Stormwater management rules specifically authorize stormwater management agencies to go above the rules. Princeton has, in fact, gone above and beyond those rules at 2B-227.6, which requires enhanced treatment for developments that discharge directly or indirectly into waters that have a TMDL. This project discharges eventually into the Bedensbrook. Bedensbrook, if you take a look on page 40 of the TMDL approved by DEP and EPA, requires a reduction of total suspended solids, I can no longer read with my glasses on, of 84% over existing requirements. So the 80% total suspended solids that is going to be removed by this plan still leaves 20%, leaving this site above and beyond what should be reduced. So I would argue that Princeton's stormwater ordinance, and I also argue our surface water quality standards, DEP regulations, tell us if there is an impaired waterway, you cannot issue a permit or an approval that would continue that impairment. This water is impaired. Also, under the MS4 permit that DEP issued to Princeton effective the beginning of this year, requires the municipality to look at TMDL's device strategies to implement that TMDL, improve water quality. 10B-227.6 is one of those strategies. So stormwater management in this system has to be better than the statewide requirements, and it is not. So my next question, with the stormwater management basins, they're designed to handle the stormwater management from the roads and the clearings, is that correct?
Yes, from the disturbed area, yes.
Okay, and as Mr. West indicated, once a house is built, you know, homeowner is going to come in. And as Mr. West indicated, once a house is built, an homeowner is going to come in, want a patio, want a shed, want a pool, and they're going to remove more trees.
Well, the stormwater basins are designed based upon the maximum permitted impervious cover on the lots.
Okay. So you've already accounted for that?
Right, we've already accounted for a future.
All right, thank you. And then I have a question, I guess this is more for Jack. The two open space lots contain the stormwater basins, but yet the open space definition would seem to preclude stormwater basins. So should the stormwater basins be in a separate lot?
Now, they can be in the open space lot, there would just be an easement. So, and I don't think it's been determined yet or even discussed whether those lots would be owned by a homeowners' association or dedicated to the municipality. But if they were to be dedicated to the municipality, then there would be an easement and they would be maintained by the homeowners' association.
Thank you. And then lastly, I'd like to support Mr. Cohen's statement that, you know, conditions be placed on any approval that would minimize the grading and require the maximization of retention of trees. Trees are an amazing stormwater management tool in and of themselves, they utilize water. And removing of trees adds more stormwater to the system. So I'd like to thank you for this opportunity and just reiterate, you know, you could approve this plan with access to Frederick's Corner Road, avoid the impacts to the wetlands. But I would also encourage you and suggest your ordinances require better stormwater management than what is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jack, can you comment on the comments made by Mr. Pisaro about our standards and the eighty percent rule, et cetera?
The specifics of it I'll have to look at, but obviously, they have to meet our ordinance. And if that truly is the case and this current plan doesn't meet the ordinance, they'd have to make those necessarily necessary corrections to meet our ordinance. So that would be done, if it is approved by this board, it would be a condition.
I mean, there were a number of requests from the stormwater consultant for additional documentation.
And that would all be a condition also.
If you could raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed, please state your full name and spell your last name.
Yes, sir, thank you for the time. My name is Courtney McLaughlin, husband and missy, M.C.L.A.U.G.H.L.I.N. I live at sixteen Frederick Court. I'll be very brief, I just want to make two clarifications. It was mentioned that traffic on Cherry Valley Road requires a bike path and it has nothing to do with the type of road. On Drake's Corner Road, they wouldn't be able to put a bike path in. The road, I believe, is sixteen feet wide. I often walk our very beautiful seventy-five pound German shepherd on Drake's Corner Road and whenever a dog, a car drives by, we have to stop, step off the road and let the car go by. I drive down the road every day to and from work and the majority of cars have to drive in the middle of the road when traffic's not coming, just because it's such a narrow road. The second clarification I'd like to make, it was said earlier that the plan was changed for three homeowners on Frederick Court, as we have three houses on that street. The last town meeting, there were approximately fifty homeowners that came to the meeting that lived up and down Drake's Corner and other roads that are off of Drake's Corner because the road is so narrow and any development in and out of Frederick Court would preclude them from using Drake's Corner. The road's just not built for it and just like to say that, thank you.
Anyone else? No? Okay. Let me close the public portion and I think we go back to board questions and discussion at this point.
I would like the applicant to talk about exactly why you did change the access point. Was it because a bunch of folks approached you and said, we don't like this plan and so you went back to DEP and pushed and pushed and pushed and pushed? I'm sorry, I'm not meaning to put words in your mouth, but I'd like for you to talk about that change because I was sort of surprised to see it myself.
Well, it's correct that the Frederick Court extension proposal was met with some major opposition. If you were here at the April meeting, you would have seen the entire crowd in the hall. And my client and myself spoke to that group for about another couple hours after we postponed the hearing, listening to the concerns of not only the residents on Frederick Court, but those on Drake's Corner. Very concerned about the access and in particular, the construction that would have to occur up and down Drake's Corner Road. Because obviously, that's the way you would have to go into the site to develop it. Correct, right? Because we're not going to have Providence Line Road, now everything's going to go off of Drake's Corner Road. So what you heard this evening is what we heard times fifty, I guess. So we made a commitment to that group that we would go back to DEP to discuss going back to the Providence Line Road access. And as Mr. Brown testified, once it was determined that we could use some of the existing alignment and road that was put in many years ago before the wetland rules changed, the reason those culverts were put in, it was in the late nineteen eighties, it was before the Army Corps turned over jurisdiction to the state. And so there was a rush by many developers that put in improvements in wetland areas before the rules became more strict. So the Thompson family actually did that work back in the late eighties. So we were able to take advantage of that. And after many discussions with DEP, it's been determined that we can qualify for what's called a general permit ten A.
Ten A.
Ten A, which actually, to correct Mr. Pisaro's comment about alternative analysis, it does not require an alternative analysis. So the Frederick Court discussion actually goes off the table.
A general permit, excuse me, a general permit doesn't require an alternative analysis?
Not that particular one, that's correct.
Because of the pre-existing?
Correct.
Access?
The minimal disturbance involved for that permit.
So one of the requests in the PEC report was that if the wetlands are crossed, that there would be curbs on the road to make sure that water runoff was not discharged into the wetland area and so forth. Can you talk a little bit about that and any other mitigation to minimize the impact on the wetlands that are being crossed?
Yes, the road is curbed completely from end to end, so none of that water is going to run directly into the wetlands. We actually are proposing an additional culvert under the road too, just to connect the wetlands on both sides of the road. And when we went out there with DEP, it seems that that particular wetlands area may not be totally wetlands, it's somewhat questionable. We talked about possibly going back and doing some additional borings, which we still may do, and some of that wetlands may actually go away and not be classified as wetlands. That, and we also showed DEP the difference in tree clearing between using that alternative and using the alternative off of Frederick Court, and there was much more tree clearing required to use the Frederick Court access. So that was also persuasive. And like we said, we don't have the permit yet, but we have had serious discussions and they seem to be favorable to granting that permit.
And these are standard value wetlands in that area? Because it's just a fifty-foot buffer, it's not a high-value wetland there?
Yeah, they're intermediate value wetlands.
I had an understanding from something that was said earlier, that you really had a verbal commitment from DEP for the permit, but it doesn't sound like you're quite at that stage yet, is that fair to say?
Well, they agreed that we would qualify for the GP ten A.
Could I ask about the water on Cherry Valley Road and runoff? Is this something that could be mitigated by some of the construction that you're doing? Or?
Well, all the water goes to Cherry Valley Road and we really can't prevent that. And in speaking to Mr. Brown, it seems that a large part of his problem was created when the culvert was improved on Cherry Valley Road and he says that they enlarged the culvert. And typically, DEP doesn't allow you to enlarge culverts, they typically want replacement in kind to prevent allowing additional stormwater to come through the culvert. So I don't know, you know, if that is really a valid argument, but there's nothing that we can do to prevent the water from going to Cherry Valley Road. And there really isn't anything we can do at Cherry Valley Road that would mitigate the problem. But we are reducing the peak rates of runoff for all of the storms.
My other question concerns this water pressure problem. I know that it may or may not affect the households up in this area, but it does affect the fire hydrants. And one of my concerns has always been that all of the ridge was a forest fire area in the nineteenth century. These things go away, but they can come again if there's a dry season. And quite frankly, the woodlands are going to have a lot more dry timber as the ash trees die off and so on. So I would really hope that you would look seriously at increasing, possible increases or boosters for the pressure in the water system throughout this area.
Well, we did submit a fire protection plan to the fire official, which included testing of the water pressures at various hydrants in the area, and the pressures were acceptable to the fire department, so.
Right, but in extreme conditions, it may not be enough, so one hopes that it can be boosted a bit. You know, a lot of what we know about this area came because the water company proposed Drake's Corner as a place to put a really enormous water tank in about, I guess it was nineteen ninety, and there was considerable opposition from the public and it never happened. But they did look at all the, a lot of the things out here, and I think some of the tracks through the vacant land were made in surveying that, just from that. Is there anything else that you'd like to ask?
No, you can go ahead.
I just had a point of, we had a request from the attorney for additional time so that he could, are we going to consider that? And if so, when would be the appropriate time to discuss that?
Well, we're sort of, meetings are full up until November, I guess, at this point.
December.
December.
We're booked through December, yes.
So it would have to carry to December, the first meeting in December, if we did that. What is your pleasure on this, board members? Do you want to carry it or do you want to decide tonight?
I'm trying to remember what expert testimony he wanted to acquire.
What, I guess, stormwater, a stormwater engineer? That's what I was actually going to ask as well. I mean, I, you know, I know that it's challenging to postpone it, but yeah, I'm really, I feel like that needs to be done. I mean, and, you know, it would be great to get, you know, from the PEC's perspective, we always want to have, you know, other opinions and we consider like hiring these consultants, but you know, if an applicant or an individual wants to pay for this themselves, I mean, I think that that would be great and it would be interesting to see the real effects of the development.
And also so that Jack can check what he said he needed to check in our own ordinance because our own ordinance, as Mr. Pisaro pointed out, may require a higher standard be met related to TMDLs. So I support carrying it also.
Carrying it, but that's also up to the applicant whether we can do that too.
Jack also say that whatever is decided will have to meet our ordinances anyway? So I'm trying to figure out what would this expert testimony change if, at the end of the day, our ordinances have to be met?
I have to see it as two different issues. I don't, I'm not asserting there's a direct connection, I'm curious about what an independent expert would say also, but that's unrelated to what I was, sorry.
Unrelated to what I was pointing out about Jack's review.
Ms. Elman?
Well, I mean, there's a connection between these issues and the pending DEP approval, is there not?
Anyways.
Is it conceivable that we want to delay until that approval is achieved? Do we want to get separate outside comments? That would be a part of a DEP consideration? I mean, in some ways, we're operating a bit in the dark as a board, as a non-expert board at this point. I guess I would say that as a whole, for all the times I've heard this application, and in my heart of hearts, I would wish the application would go away, we could just leave it nice and peaceful and full of trees. But that's clearly not going to be the case. I do think that there are real positives in this particular configuration, like the cluster arrangement. I think it gives us the benefit of considerable open space. Whether it's open space that could be used is another question, but it still is open I do think they have worked hard over the last thirty years plus.
About two.
To get the whole, to get this whole thing through. I wish they'd stopped at some point, but they didn't. So I guess I'm happy to wait or to give them the extension that they've asked for on the basis that we really will be more happier if we have more information. And I guess that's where the crux of our concern is, not so much in the configuration of the lots and your plans for those. Am I, is that right?
I would agree, second what Gail said. I think the applicant graciously gave one group of neighbors who had a lawyer who was trying to get up to speed on the application, some time to get up to speed. And we carried this and they came back with what I think is the best plan yet. I haven't been through thirty years of this application, just the last iteration, but I, I, I'm not sure what, other than our crowded schedule, is the downside of continuing this so that another neighbor's attorney can get up to speed and possibly learn more.
I would say that I think there's an advantage to making sure the decision is made before the end of this year. There will be changes on the board at the end of this year. I think it would be really useful for those of us who've heard this application and this discussion to be the board that is making the final decision. So if we could find a date in December, that would, I think, be ideal.
Hi, Tom, as you know, the clock runs tomorrow. Do you want to extend it?
Willing to extend, I would like to hear some discussion on what date we're focusing on.
I also just want to make a comment that I think we're being a little bit overly optimistic to think that a stormwater expert hired independently by an objector is going to actually propose an improved stormwater management plan? I mean, they're more likely to just try and prove that you can't develop the site without impacting his client. I know that we're interested in the low impact, you know, the low impact development, but I think in a way we're better off asking the client to work with us. Like, for instance, I've been thinking a little bit about what kind of a condition I would want to impose if we were to approve the application tonight. And it would be something to the effect that the grading plan would be reworked to conform more closely to the existing grades, to be reviewed by the landscape subcommittee when submitted. And of course, the tree survey, we know has to be updated. It's not complete as it is. And as far as I could tell, all it was, was an existing tree survey. There was no tree demolition plan that identified specific trees. But, you know, if you could rework the grading plan so that it was more, closer to the existing grading and then propose existing specimen trees even in the area of the homes being developed, I know it's not something we can lock individual homeowners into when they're actually developing their individual lots. But if they have a plan that makes sense, that proposes something more that we would be in favor of, it gives us a starting point as people develop the individual lots.
So is it possible to use this time, say if we decide to extend it, to kind of do all those things? So, you know, the landscape subcommittee can review it, you know, the applicant can make the modifications with understanding that, you know, the subdivision design is probably the best it's going to be. And the, you know, the resident and their consultant can develop their own stormwater study. And when we reconvene in December, you know, we can kind of look at all these things and make our decision? Is that possible?
Eileen, what dates do you have in December?
That makes it difficult for my scheduling because I don't know what parts are being reviewed. So you have to decide how you want to proceed. My only thing with the schedule, the eighteenth of this month will be open, but I don't have my, we don't have our planner available. November is totally booked. And then the two meetings in December, the first meeting is already booked. So that leaves us the second meeting in December unless you, Tom, one of the applications on the first meeting is yours. So if you want to move that.
Okay, it's, let me ask you this. We have, what, not quite an hour left for this meeting? David has made a very good start in crafting the memo that we would develop for this. If we develop conditions that would meet a lot of these problems and can come to an agreement on that, we could vote on it tonight and then go on. Usually the landscape subcommittee is something that's recommended after an application is completed. So rather than, they don't actually design landscape. It might be interesting, but then we have.
Madam Chair, I would endorse that approach. We do have another hour. And in terms of this issue of the stormwater system design and meeting with the neighbor, we would be willing to, as a condition, to meet with Mr. Brown and his attorney and his civil engineering expert when and if he ever retains one. And we'll see if we can come up with a mutually acceptable solution. Obviously, we're going to need to engage with Mr. West and Mr. Scoopian on any redesign or new solution. And then perhaps if we don't reach a meeting of the minds, we might have to come back to the board for sort of a final say on that. But I'm somewhat hopeful that we could reach a resolution, though my expert is telling me there's not a whole lot more that can be done. But we're willing to listen to another perspective on it.
Mr. Leticia, you said that there were a certain number of things in these memos that you couldn't agree with. And I've been sort of waiting for you to give us the list of those.
Okay. Well, the big one obviously is the bike path. While we're going to be guided by the board's decision on that, I just wanted to raise that. That's one of the large issues that this board has to grapple with on whether or not you're going to require the bike path connection between this proposed cul-de-sac and Frederick Court. But we will abide by whatever the board ultimately decides with regard to that. And then I could quickly go down our list, which again is really small.
Tom, could you get that microphone right under your mouth?
My apologies. Is that better? Yes.
Can we stay with the bike path for a second?
Sure.
This whole issue of going through the water tower lot?
Right.
And there's probably ways of getting around the easement. But what's the relationship between the water company and land? Is there a ground lease?
It's a lease.
A lease.
Very, a long-term lease, yes.
Does that have any pertinence for the question of a bike path through the lot?
I really don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
I'm not familiar with the specific terms of the lease. I think what's been testified to by the McLaughlins, though, is that there's really no room for the path because now there's a gate over the, you know, the access road that I think was the intent of Mr. West. That's where the path would go. Now, you can't put a path there. You're not going to, unless you move into the McLaughlin's property, which obviously they're not going to accept.
I really don't think that's prohibitive. I mean, along Delaware Raritan Canal, at every road, there's a gate across the bike path. And you dismount your bike and you walk around the gate. I mean, you don't ride straight through, but, I mean, it's not.
Again, you know, we're, I don't know if there's a way to relocate it somewhere else away from the water tower. I don't think we really looked at that. But in any event, generally speaking, we're willing to implement whatever this board determines in that regard. In terms of Mr. Dobremousk's report, I think we clarified everything in there. We have no issues. Obviously, we clarified about the tree removal count. It is not four thousand fifty. And we clarified about the detention basins.
Tom, why don't you, as you go through, why don't you tell us what paragraph you're on?
Yes. Okay, so with the landscape A, had to do with the number of trees and we've clarified that, five A. And then in five C, there was a reference about sand bottomed stormwater infiltration basins. That's not what's being proposed here. We clarified that. Everything else, Mr. Dobremousk's report is acceptable. Moving on to Mr. West's.
By the way, what the board would have to address with respect to Dan's report is the question he raises in his paragraph under subdivision plan F with respect to basically who's going to pay the cost of any bike path or sidewalk. If the board wants to address that, obviously it can, but it's the board's purview.
I'm sorry, Jerry, I didn't hear that.
I said, one other issue that the board may want to address is a point of four F that is under the subdivision plan where it talks about, maybe the board wants to revisit the question, which is now already been answered by the HOA documents, as to who's paying for the cost of sidewalks and bike paths. Now, the board doesn't have to address that at all, but Dan raised it and I just wanted to note that.
Right. It's already provided for, right? And I don't think anything more needs to be done, but, you know, other than it's now going to be shared by these new residents in this phase.
Now, Dan, when you asked, when you raised the question of whether the board should consider this further, what was your thinking?
Whether the condition would change at all or should it continue?
Do you see any reason why it would be changed?
No, not based by any of the testimonials.
Okay.
Can I move on to Mr. West's?
Just what about the aspects of planting more trees along the road and having a mix of species? That's all fine.
I think ultimately it gets approved by the landscape subcommittee. Mr. West, Mr. Bridgers' memo of September twenty-fifth. Other than the issue of the bike path, we already discussed, we have no objections to the recommendations in Mr. West's and Mr. Bridgers' report.
There is one I think you'll object to. It's under ten B dash one ninety point two E. The cluster development requires providing plans and elevations of all the individual houses. I think you don't want to provide that, right?
Thank you for clarifying, Mr. Cohen. No, we have not done that because we're just creating the lots. We're not the builder. Thank you for pointing that out.
Jerry, just one thing on, if the board does grant the extension, the six-year extension, that the off-track contribution should be based on whatever year they actually perfect the subdivision. So this is based on the cost index going to two thousand and eighteen. If they extend it for six years, then that off-track contribution would be based on the cost index six years from now or whatever year they perfected.
Jack, when is that payment due?
It's a condition of perfecting the subdivision. So for the town to sign off.
If we wait till the end of the six years, so it's whenever we file. Okay, that's understood.
And one other clarification in a comment made by one of the objector's attorneys about no construction traffic on Drake's Corner. He brought it up initially, but then didn't bring it up a second time. I have a concern with that. As a lot of you know, we're dealing with this issue on another project. It's impossible to enforce. Even if the applicant says we won't have our construction traffic there, it's not enforceable.
We will agree to an eight AM start time on construction as recommended by Mr. West.
Tom, what page are you on now?
I'm sorry, Jerry, that is page eleven, item K.
And everything before that you've agreed to?
We agree to everything. Agree to the LED lighting. The comment about the booster pumps, we agree. Oh, the, this five-foot water line easement, as Mr. Brown testified to, we believe there, that's an old line. There may not be any infrastructure in that easement. So I may, we may not need to do that, but we just need to investigate further on what the status is of that line. But we will agree to expand the easement if necessary. And we agree with everything else, Jerry, in that memo. No need to talk about anything. I guess a minor nit, item eighteen on page fourteen of fourteen, in terms of the documents to be reviewed, easements, greenbelt areas, et cetera. I don't know if that was intended instead of the municipal engineer, land use engineer? Is it supposed to be the municipal engineer?
I'm going to let the municipal engineer handle that one.
Okay. That's fine.
She gets all the hard ones.
If somebody could orient me back to the point that Mr. Cohen made and that, Tom, you agreed to, what page is that on?
That is in Mr. West's memo, page. Page four. Item E.
Oh, okay.
Which is, this comes right out of the ordinance, ten B dash one ninety point two.
But is the thought that we're not going to require that?
Correct. It's not applicable to this application.
Okay. But A, B, C, and D are okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just ask one question about this bike path again from the cul-de-sac to Frederick Court? There's a section of the ordinance that's cited as requiring it?
Yes.
So what is that specifically?
You got to that section? Just got to find it.
Ten B dash one seventy-nine.
So basically, in order to minimize potential dangers or inconveniences from blocking of single access to existing street systems and to promote the circulation of emergency vehicles and services, every major subdivision involving a new street shall, unless the planning board shall specifically find that such, that it's not practical, shall be served by not less than two accesses. So that's the case here. Then, let's see. Yeah, in addition, for greater convenience to the public, if such subdivision contains fifteen or more lots on a street access to an existing system, is not near one end of the subdivision with no access to a street and at the other end, at least a bike, at least one bike path on an easement of not less than twelve feet in width shall be installed unless the planning board finds that it's not practical.
I'm going to be the bad guy and say we should put it, we should require it. I mean, I just. I know the neighbors aren't happy about it, but I think the bike path should be put in based on that.
Jack, if there's a problem with putting it through the water tower lot, and my guess if there is a problem, it's going to be because of the lease as opposed to the easement, which I think we can resolve. Is there an alternative route which circumvents the water tower lot that can be used?
I'm not sure the full extent of all of the easements on that particular lot. There are alternatives. It's just to the extent that it becomes practical at that point, I'm not sure. I've, you know, I've looked at other ways, but there's actually, there's two water towers. I've, you know, I've looked at other ways, but there's actually, there's two water towers there. And the easement then may have to go on to some of the lots within the proposed subdivision. I mean, it's, it's something we could look at and be reviewed as part of the Landscape Subcommittee.
Gets, get more information and...
But, but the idea is that the way the condition will be articulated, the notion is, is that basically we're going to want to have a bike path designed, either including the water tower lot or somewhere else, unless it's not practicable to have such a design.
And that determination would be made by the Landscape Subcommittee?
It could be the Landscape Subcommittee, it could be you, who do you think it should be?
I'd prefer the Landscape Subcommittee.
Okay, the Landscape Subcommittee would prefer it to be you.
That's a good answer.
So the committee could, has the authority to waive it if they determine it's impractical?
I think, I think that's the best way of handling it, but let's find what the board-
I just wanted to be clear on that.
Everybody in the board agree?
That works for everybody. Okay.
Sir. So I think we completed, I think we completed Mr. West's and Mr. Bridgers' memo. Moving on to IH Engineers. I think everything in here related to providing testimony on certain items, which Mr. Viterisi provided as part of his testimony. So I don't think there's any conditions that had to be put in the resolution, but maybe I missed something.
We just mentioned the, the tree trimming at the Province Line Road Access, which I think is covered in Jack's report.
Yes, thank you. Can you just identify what paragraph that is? Mr. Stankis?
11, it's 11 on page three.
I believe it's 11. 11 and 12.
Tom, in my memo, we requested site triangle easements at that intersection, so that would cover it under that.
All right.
Say that again, Jack?
In my memo, we asked for site triangle easements at the intersection of the new road with Province Line, so that would cover what Brian has as far as some tree trimming necessary.
Okay, so that would cover both Brian's 11 and 12?
Mm-hmm. Is, is it 11 and 12 in yours?
11 and 12 both discussed the issue, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Next, I have Mr. Scoopian's memo of September 18th, 2018.
Tom, all those are in my memo, and you've already agreed to it, so I don't think you have to go over that.
Thank you, yes.
Well, I guess the one exception, Jack, wouldn't it be that the next to the last paragraph on page two, where, where basically Mr. Scoopian says that there should be a further final review of the stormwater management plan?
Yes, that's, that's standard. We, they have to meet all the conditions, so as a, as meeting the conditions of approval, that would be done.
Okay.
Okay, and, nothing for traffic safety.
Next, the Traffic Safety Committee memo of March 1st, 2018. The committee had, has no comments. Not sure, I have to discuss that with my client. And next, the September 12th, 2018 memo from the Princeton Environmental Commission.
Well, I take it with respect to item number one, under the executive summary, you would not agree to that, correct?
That's correct.
What about, what about paragraph two? I guess it's two conditions, one is the porous paving, and the second is the cleaning operation.
The second one relates to porous pavement. I believe the commission was suggesting that the road be porous pavement. I don't think that'll be acceptable to your engineer.
Where'd he go?
In terms of driveways, we could consider that, though, I don't know if we could do it on all of them. Mr. Brown?
Yes, we could do porous pavement on the driveways, but not on the road.
Not on the road, right.
Is that acceptable to the board? Is that because the, the road will be public, and then, okay, so it's, okay.
Rorous paving-
What was the question?
Rorous paving on the driveways, but not on the main road.
Correct, and, and Xenon's question was, is that because of the weight?
It's because it's public, it's a public road, and public, I guess it doesn't allow for porous pavement.
Oh, okay.
It's good to know.
Now, the PEC, in the second part of paragraph two, also recommends a roadway, a maintenance plan. Tom, what's your view on that?
Well, I think that comes with a porous pavement scheme, right?
Yes, that would be part of the stormwater management operation.
Okay, so we don't have to say anything separately on that?
Yeah.
I'd like to ask a question about porous driveways, which I think is great. Delighted that you're willing to do that. Does that mean that the stormwater flow coming out of the gutters would not go directly into pipes and into, ultimately into one of the basins? Could you disconnect it so that those permeable pavement driveways really would be managing a significant amount of stormwater?
Well, that's really a different issue. This, the, actually, the leaders from the roof weren't proposed to be connected to the storm drain to begin with.
Okay.
But they also weren't proposed to be routed to the porous pavement driveways. The porous pavement driveways would just control the runoff coming from the driveways. It would be infiltrated rather than all of it runoff.
Okay.
Sheet flow for the roof leaders?
Excuse me?
The roof leaders would discharge to grade and have sheet flow?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, that's great. Would you give some kind of, I don't know whether it would be in the deed, or how do you make sure that the homeowners know, and all subsequent homeowners know, that that is a permeable pavement driveway, and it can never be, can never have a sealant, you know, put on it? It, it, it needs to be considered a stormwater feature. How do you, how do you handle that? I just think it's important to make certain that that's understood by the homeowner and, you know, not in the four-point type at the bottom of-
I don't know any way of doing that except a deed notice.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Yeah, a deed, Jeff just said-
I think restrictions are, have to be put on the lots anyways for other items, we can add that.
And we'll have a deed, we'll have a deed notice that does that.
Okay.
Are we on number three now, Jerry?
Yes.
Okay. I guess the, the basic position here is that we are currently proposing naturalized stormwater basins?
Yes, by building the berms rather than digging a conventional detention basin, we are doing naturalized basins.
Jack, what's your, what's your view on this one?
That's correct, they are, and then, they have a lot of trees that they, they owe us, so anything that, any of the basins that can be supplemented, we would be doing that also.
Okay, so we do not have, have to add anything in that, at least first part of paragraph three of the PEC memo?
That's, that's fine.
Right, okay. Now, at the, at the end of that paragraph, PEC also suggests a maintenance plan must be a critical part of all, part of all stormwater management plans, a plant list should be provided.
Yeah, that's, that's in our memo also, they have to provide a, a maintenance plan for everything.
And what about the plant list?
Pardon?
What about the plant list?
I mean, that's going to be reviewed by the Shade Tree Subcommittee, and the Municipal Arborist, and, and Dan, so I mean, I think they've agreed to that.
As part of, as part of the final landscape plan?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And then, moving on to four?
I think four is-
We've talked about that, it's a-
That really relates to the condition I was trying to-
Right.
I have a quick question about plants in and around the infiltration or bioretention basins. Do we have a general requirement or expectation that they be native plants? That's certainly considered a common best practice, I just want to make sure that-
Yes, we do.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay, just staying with four for a second. We discussed at some length the whole idea of basically using design techniques to minimize the, the impact with respect to grading, tree removal. Now, in four, the PEC goes on to say that they, they'd like to see a, an increase in required rear yard setback. Anybody want to go with that, and Tom, what's your reaction to that? I don't know that the board, what's the board's pleasure on that also? Unnecessary? Yeah, I, I agree. David said he thinks a little bit of overkill, which I think is a good point. And does anybody want to pursue that? No? Okay. And then, also, proposed lots on the south side is, of roadway, as was discussed, are within this greenbelt deed restricted area, which according to the PEC's recommendation should preclude the location of septic systems. But that's not consistent with the longstanding practice.
We've, we've asked them where possible to eliminate them from the greenbelt, but they have to be able to get suitable soil borings in an alternate location.
Okay.
We think they may on some of them, maybe not all of them.
Okay, but we'll make that a condition then.
You just, you'll leave the condition that I have in my memo that we're-
Oh, you, you say that already?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, item five, they recommend that the open space parcels be deeded for preservation in perpetuity. That's acceptable, obviously, an exception to that will be the construction of the paths through the open space and, and the detention basins.
Well, not the, not the houses, I mean, we're talking about the open space lots, right?
That's correct.
It's just detention basins, right?
Right.
Right, I guess the question that is not quite raised by five, but it's related, is what's the board's pleasure on a recommendation to, to council as to ownership by the, by the municipality as opposed to the homeowners association?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question.
Question is, the board can either be silent on this, or it can recommend to council that the open space lots be dedicated to council and accepted, the dedication accepted, or it could recommend that, that the homeowners association retain ownership. Does the board have any feeling, any way on this?
My feeling is that the homeowners association should do the maintenance of the detention facilities. I don't think the municipality wants to get into-
And generally for the open space, and generally for the open space, the homeowners association would be responsible for maintenance.
But the access will be public, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the, the ownership would, would be with the homeowners association, David? The, the ownership would be with the homeowners association?
Yeah. I mean, I've been part of these discussions before, I don't really, you know, I was pleased to see there was a section of, one of the reports that indicated whether it's owned by the municipality or by the homeowners association, taxes get paid on it, you know, which was a problem that we came up against with the Copperwood, where there was a, an opened, preserved open space that was deeded to a nonprofit and came off the tax rolls. So that's, you know, but, but apparently, there's something in the ordinance to prevent that in this instance, so, I, it's sort of six of one, half a dozen of the other. I mean, we might want to approve it and let council decide which way they want to have it, because they'll have more insight into what the different expenses-
Maybe we just leave it for council without a recommendation one way or another. But, but in any event, if it's going to be deeded to the homeowners association, there has to be the public access that we discussed.
Yes, in order to obtain the bonus, they have to be public paths, yes.
They, they have to be what, Tom?
In order to obtain the bonus that we're seeking-
Oh, public access, yeah.
There has to be public access, yes.
Too much of that.
Item number six, I don't think we need at all, right? I mean, obviously, they're not going to be able to build if they can't get, get perk tests approved.
Yes, that's, this is a statement.
Right, and then seven, any problem with any of that?
No problem.
Okay.
Then I think the next, the next couple sections are just description, background. And then we're, we're on to the general recommendations.
So, just to clarify, you agree to seven also? So that's LED fixtures?
Yes, we agree, yes.
And I take, it would not have a problem, in the section on background, about halfway down, and this would only be applicable if the homeowners association retained ownership. The PEC talks about securing easements so that connections can be made to the trails in Montgomery, and I guess Princeton as well. I, I guess in any event, there's going to be, obviously, an easement with respect to the, to the, to the paths, so public access could be permitted. So I don't, I don't think we need to say that separately.
The section on the low, low-impact developments, we did want to make a recommendation on that. The low-impact development section of the PEC memo.
So in terms of the low impact development, you know, our testimony's been that we believe we're implementing a number of measures that fall into this category. Most significantly, the, the cluster design.
And the-
I don't know what else-
And the commitment to minimize regrading when and where you can, that kind of thing. I do have a question about RSIS, and how it, and how it relates to and may sometimes create obstacles to LID best practices, and I, I am wondering whether there are rules in the residential site improvement standards, or standards, that may be related to, for example, curbing, where if you did not strictly abide by RSIS because both you and the town thought it was better not to have curbing, and instead have the roadway drain, you know, off into the, a swale, or, you know, the, the kind of shoulder that's described in the PEC's memo? Or whether there are some other things, like the size of the bulb at the end of the cul-de-sac? Are there ways that you, that, are there changes that you could make independent of RSIS that would help you to meet that higher standard? For example, related to TMDL, or reducing-
Well, for example, curbs on the driveways, I don't think your engineer would be too happy with uncurbed driveways in this location. I mean, I'll let Jack speak for himself, but typically-
Yeah, I, I don't know how you feel about that.
There's a couple of reasons why we, we want it curbed in this case. It's relatively narrow road, so in a case like that, you always have problems with people that go off the road and rut up the side. Secondly, the, the slope of the road is relatively steep, so you would have a lot of erosion problems also. So I would definitely recommend that in this case you have curbs.
Is that in the plans already, Jack?
Yes.
Okay, is that-
Okay, well, I mean, my general question was about-
But to answer your general question, yes, you can impose conditions that are different than RSIS. The applicant might object, but-
In the spirit of meeting a higher standard for water quality, you know, for example, or runoff or something, that's what I'm trying to get at. When we're looking at ways to raise the bar, maybe consistent with what we need to do under provisions of our ordinance, we can maybe look at RSIS-related stuff, and I don't-
Yes, you're not 100% bound by RSIS.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, is that-
Is that...
I think, well, we have some more in the PEC report, right? Under the general recommendations, you flip the page, paragraph two asks for, I guess, an LOI and a, that be submitted, and also an NJDEP flood hazard area verification. Do you have, you have the LOI, right?
Yes, we have a...
We actually have both of those.
We have.
Okay, and so you'll submit those.
Yes, we will.
Then what about, what's your reaction to three, more detailed erosion and sedimentation control plan?
That was actually noted in the report that that's going to be required when they go to the...
They have to go to Mercer County Soil Conservation District, and that's a required approval.
So we don't have to have a separate condition on that?
No. It's already a condition that was referenced in our memo.
Do we want to kind of embellish that, or at least have some conditions related to that? As PEC talks in paragraph three, going down toward the end, the plan should provide that limits, that limits, a plan should be provided that limits areas of disturbance to a 15-foot maximum around the building, which seems to me pretty stringent, and five feet around utilities and roadways. Jack, what's your reaction to that, Jack?
I don't believe you should have that. I mean, it's impossible to limit disturbance to 15 feet around the building.
Yeah.
Just based on practically using the yard, plus just the grade of the lots, you wouldn't be able to do it.
Yeah. And then after that, a logistics plan should be provided. I'm not even sure what that means. The next statement by PEC is a logistics plan should be provided. Senator, maybe you can tell us what that means? I'm not sure what that means.
I don't know what it means.
It's referring to how you do the construction, staging areas and stuff like that.
Okay. Do we want something in on that? No? Okay. Moving on. Then a stormwater pollution prevention plan is the last point in paragraph three. Do we need, do we need that? Jack, what's your reaction? It's the last sentence in paragraph three?
They're already providing that, so I mean, you can add that condition, but they already have agreed to it, and it's referenced in the other memos.
Okay, so I want to put that in separately. And then under four, is there anything that should be put in? Obviously, because there's no B, C really doesn't apply. Now, okay, so first, the integration of a sidewalk bike path should be incorporated into the plans, but that really is, really has been addressed.
It's been addressed, and that's the issue of the bike path between the two developments subject to landscape subcommittee.
And what about paragraph D, establish responsibilities for ongoing maintenance of public elements, including stormwater basins and roadways?
That'll, and again, that's been established. The road will be, it'll be a public road maintained by the municipality, but the basins, the trails, everything else will be by the homeowners association.
Okay, and when you say it's been established, is that, how has that been established?
It's been in its testimony, it's been in, it's referenced in the memos, but I mean, if you want to clarify that condition, you can.
Right.
Well, I think it's established in the declaration, Jerry.
Oh, in the declaration, already?
homeowners association.
Okay, for all of those elements, Tom?
Well, we'll have to amend the documents to incorporate this additional common lands.
Okay, so it's on, yeah. Let me jot that down.
Quick question related to maintenance of the basins. It'll be the responsibility of the homeowners association, but am I correct that if those basins are found to not be functioning properly or failing, that ultimately it is, it falls on the town to ensure this is under the MS4 permit, that...
That's correct.
That those things, so...
Yeah, we actually now have a permit required for every development, that they have to provide an annual maintenance report of their basin.
Thanks.
Okay, then just moving on, under site plan and landscaping, one and two seem to me really pretty much covered by what we've talked about previously in terms of the landscape plan, et cetera, et cetera.
Agreed.
Yes. Now, what about three? Now, we've actually, have addressed soil remediation in some other contexts, although it's been kind of downtown Princeton context. Do we want to put anything about soil remediation, which is in paragraph three, in as a condition? Do you think we should put that in?
You're talking about number three?
Number three, yeah.
If the applicant agrees to it.
I don't really know what they mean in terms of soil amendment. So, we're talking about going in there and tilling every lot a foot deep and adding peat moss or whatever you add?
Well, the problem is that, you know, when new homes are built, the construction equipment compacts the soil, which will, doesn't really allow for percolation and, you know, stormwater kind of absorption. And so, the idea is to, when we say remediate, you know, is to kind of restore that, you know, capacity for stormwater.
Well, the soil erosion standards from the Soil Conservation District address that in terms of tilling and mulching, seeding, fertilizing. So that's all really covered in the soil erosion plan.
And that's where the areas have been compacted?
Yes.
Okay.
So they do not require decompaction, though, do they? They require whatever, well, you tell me.
They require tilling, raking, I don't know, it doesn't specifically say decompaction, but the things that they recommend result in decompaction in order to establish lawn.
Can I think, in light of that, is there anybody who'd want that in? I don't see the need for it. Jack, what about you?
It's, I mean, there are, there are conditions in the soil conservation approval that address some of this. As far as the decompaction of the soil, I don't think I've had, ever seen it done around any of the residential, I mean, especially if you're in an area near trees, you can't do it, but, I mean, it can be done, I just, I don't believe anybody has been doing it in town. Doesn't mean it shouldn't be done, but...
Maybe it makes sense putting it in. And we did, we did put that in for that, you know, one of those lots, I think, off Witherspoon. We actually had a soil remediation condition. So why don't we put that in for the areas where the soils have been compacted, just like...
For the lawn areas around the homes.
Okay.
Or any staging areas, places that have been subject to serious compaction. Yeah.
Maybe we just say compacted areas. And then what about four? Tom, what's your reaction to that?
Been on a roll, we've been agreeing to most of everything. I think this is where we hit. We hit the no's, unfortunately.
Okay. Anybody either on the board or staff want to comment on that?
It's difficult to enforce. The homeowner's not going to want it.
Yeah. I mean, that's okay.
When you're buying a $2 million house and you have a patch of weeds...
Right, there's always that balance.
Down the property line.
Yeah.
It's going to be difficult to enforce.
Okay. And five, the leaf management plan, do we really need?
The town has a leaf management plan. I guess they're looking for more, something on each individual lot, but the town has a leaf composting program.
We'll agree to that.
You'll agree to that?
To the township's.
Oh, okay, well. So you'll agree to what the township's already doing? Okay, Tom. What do we want, do we want to do anything about six?
So long as I don't have to enforce it.
Well, that's it, right?
I mean, can you, can you put together a spec on your drawings that calls for organic...
Well, some of those things are specified in the soil erosion plans, like using fertilizer is specified as required in the soil erosion regulations. So I don't know how we can agree to that when soil erosion's going to tell...
Well, it's not saying not to use them, it's saying to use organic fertilizers rather than synthetic fertilizers and... He's saying the soil erosion management plans require fertilizers, you know, because basically you need for the grass or whatever to grow quickly to prevent erosion after final grading, so you're required to put in fertilizer. I'm not, I don't want to be a pain about this, but if it's, if it's something that you can specify without too much trouble, and you're willing to, that'd be great.
I mean, you can put it as a note on your drawings, but you can't enforce homeowners to do that. Even a homeowners association, you can't. I mean, they really don't. They hire a landscape company.
Yeah, I think, I'm thinking about this more for the public space. I mean, it's the work that the developer's doing, not for the individual homeowners in this instance.
And if you specify compost or other organic fertilizers, I mean, otherwise, you're just contributing to your TMDL problem. And anyway, I think...
We agree, it's just how do you enforce it?
Yeah. Why don't you put something in, and we'll leave it on the public spaces and not on the individual lots, that sounds okay?
You know, the comment says that the plans are already calling for the fertilizer, which, as you say, they have to do to meet the soil erosion requirements. So if you'll put a note on your drawings that require organic approach rather than synthetic, I think that's all I'm asking for.
That's acceptable.
Okay, so that'll be for the private lots as well, David? Okay. Anything on the general...
We've got one minute.
There's a series of suggestions on the general building. What's everybody's feeling on that? And Tom, you also.
What are we going to do?
It just says that one last section of the PEC report on general building, where they're making a number of suggestions as to high-energy HVAC systems, et cetera, et cetera.
I think it's beyond the purview of the planning board to be...
Right.
Governing the individual buildings.
Okay. And I think, I think that's it. If you, if you don't mind, what I like to do is just go through my notes and see if there are any that we haven't covered.
Shade tree.
There's a shade tree report also.
Jerry, shade tree, March 2nd, 2018.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right, I'm sorry. The only thing I saw on that was on page two. Next to last paragraph, we'd like to see a more diverse number of trees so as to avoid monoculture, and I think, I think we saw that in another report as well. Everybody agree to that?
Something that was already agreed to, actually. It was, it was in Jack's report.
What is the 5%, 10%, 15% ratio? What does that mean?
That relates to the species. It goes five in genus, 10 in species. It's a common thing in arboriculture, it's understood. If you make it a condition, that's fine.
So if you experienced inland use, you've been doing stuff in land use for years, you should understand what that means? Okay, I understand.
And I think that completes the reports.
That completes the reports. Let me just go back and see what conditions, I've jotted down, I think probably most, if not all of them, we've discussed. We talked about the off-track contribution. Obviously, we're going to get, we want the permit that you expect to get from DEP.
Yes.
Now, I had a note about that the Board of Health must give final approval for all the septic systems. I don't think we have to say anything about that, they have to do that anyway. You'd agree, we don't have to say anything about the Board of Health giving final approval for the septic systems.
That's correct.
That's required, yeah. Streetlights will be LED. Then the master plan path will be subject to field siting. That easement, the water easement will be widened from 5 to 25 feet, but the applicant will first make a judgment, make a determination as to whether it's serving any function. Obviously, we've heard from one homeowner that it is, and we'll work with Jack on relocating it, or I guess eliminating it, depending upon what the circumstances are. Okay. I take it, this is a plot plan. We want basically designs that will maximize saving trees and minimize regrading, and basically respect the existing grading to the extent practical, so as to have the least impact on the environment as it can. I also have as part of that use non-structural techniques from the stormwater management regulations, and part of that is just, you know, some creativity in house design. Okay? Okay. The applicant, along with Jack, will review the stormwater management program to determine whether it comes within that, I don't know if that's the MS4 permit or exactly what it was that Mr. Pizarro was talking about, but that you were going to check into further, Jack, right? So we're going to do that. And if, if that applies, and the stormwater management program does not satisfy those obligations, it'll be obviously modified so that it does so.
Yeah, they will modify their basin to meet that condition.
Right. David, I think you had made a comment about more specimen trees, but I didn't quite catch any nuances of that.
Well, I think it relates to minimizing regrading, and what I would like to see, we need an updated tree location plan, including identification of trees to be demolished. And that should allow for actually this new sort of grading plan to be accompanied by a landscape plan that could show, in addition to new plantings, existing trees to remain. And, you know, I think we're asking them to come back with a, with a plan that, we were asking them for a landscape plan anyway. We want to ask them to do that in a way that maximizes retention of existing specimen trees.
Now, I take it in terms of trees to remain, we're really talking about areas on the lot that'll be disturbed. I mean, obviously, there's substantial sections where nothing's going to happen, except maybe, you know, the master plan.
Right, this is only within the area where the work is happening. We're not looking for the tree location plan to extend through the...
Forest, maybe.
Yeah, through the forest.
Then the applicant is going to meet with Mr. Brown and Mr. Casey and their stormwater management expert, if they're a team one, to see if things could be done to mitigate the impact of surface flow on, on the Brown property.
Just a clarification on David's comment, to make sure I understand and to make sure the applicant understands, you're actually looking for them to submit a revised lot grading plan, and, which would be reviewed by the shade tree, by the landscape subcommittee.
Right.
So each, not individually on the lots, but that plan that you see on the board there, they would actually look at regrading the individual lots to try to save trees.
Right now, they're all graded to provide just a flat pad for the houses to go on, which doesn't make sense in this setting, so...
Do we want two bites of this apple in the sense that traditionally, we've always required, and it might be in the ordinance, as part of a plot plan, that the applicant, for an individual lot, come in and show the grading, trees, the location of the house? I guess, Jack, you...
Yes, we're looking at two bites to the apple, that the landscape subcommittee is going to look at a revised grading plan where, because we still don't know what kind of house. The house could be twice as big as what's shown there or at a different location. But at least in theory, that the properties could be graded to save more trees.
You get two bites. We, I, I just get one bite.
I get two.
Okay. Then the off-track contribution, the actual amount is going to be based upon when the applicant perfects the subdivision. The open space lots, we will not recommend to council one way or another whether council should ask for and accept dedication, but we'll say, we'll indicate that's up to council as to whether council wants to have those lots dedicated, or whether the homeowners association will own them. If the homeowners association owns them, it'll be public access and easements, and those open space lots will be preserved in perpetuity. Then the homeowners association documents will be amended to include phase five, and as we talked about just a few minutes ago, updated tree location plan, including trees to be demolished, and new plantings and trees to remain in the areas of disturbance. Okay. Then the off-track contribution, the actual amount is going to be based upon when the applicant perfects the subdivision. The open space lots, we will not recommend to council one way or another, whether council should ask for and accept dedication, but we'll say, we'll indicate that's up to council as to whether council wants to have those lots dedicated to them, or whether the homeowners association will own them. If the homeowners association owns them, they'll be public access and easements, and those open space lots will be preserved in perpetuity. Then the homeowners association documents will be amended to include Phase Five, and as we talked about just a few minutes ago, updated tree location plan, including trees to be demolished, and new plantings and trees to remain in the areas of disturbance. And that's, that's it for me.
Okay. Anybody have anything else?
Did you include the purview's pavement for the driveways?
Yes.
I thought I said that, but if I didn't, if I didn't.
You may have, you speak quickly.
Are we talking about the extension also?
What?
No extension of Frederick Court?
The six-year.
Oh, yeah, the extended vesting, yes. Yeah, right, well, that's not a condition, that'll just be separate relief. So what they're looking, what they're looking for are, is preliminary and final major site plan and subdivision approval, plus extended vesting, and the only other aspect of the, of the decision by the board will be the conditions.
Okay. If you're content with Jerry's list?
I'll move it with the conditions as outlined by Mr. Mueller.
Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second for that? Anyone?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Is there further discussion? All right. Would you like to call the roll, please?
Ms. Capizoli? Yes. Mr. Coen?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Stankowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Texarney?
Yes.
Mrs. Alman?
Yes.
Mr. Williamson?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Gunning?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much.